Being here. I see Bruce on this page, Heather and Rob, there's four on that page. And then clicking over. I see Bob. So who are we missing?
Bob's in the back of the bus.
One, two, three, four.
We're missing Kerry.
Yeah.
We're not live yet, are we?
No.
It says we're live.
It is here.
It says we're live.
Does somebody want to talk with Kerry because I did not get any email or text from Kerry saying she was not going to be coming to the meeting tonight?
I, I did get a text from Kerry. She was struggling with internet. She was having to log on via her phone.
Yes. Well, I, I know the joys of losing your internet, discovering that five minutes before the meeting like I did tonight. So luckily.
Kerry's driving into the district office to get on, so she'll be a while, so we'll probably be able to.
Tell her that, yeah, just drive safe and all right. Otherwise, are we set to go, Nick?
Uh, I believe so. Yes.
Do you have the flag for our screen share?
Yeah, yes, just, just give me one, give me one second. I have to figure out which screen I saved it on.
I'll give you more than one second, Nick.
Okay.
While we were waiting for, um, to do our pledge allegiance, I'll just ask our secretary, do we have any requests to speak? Uh, whether they were mailed in by the four o'clock deadline or anyone live that wants to speak?
No, we do not.
We do not. All right. Thank you, Tim. So then after we complete the pledge, we'll go straight into superintendent reports.
On the flag. All right. Now I gotta just share the screen. Just give me. Start again. Share screen. Are you guys able to see the flag?
Yes. All right. Please, everyone rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you. Now, Nick, for superintendent reports, and I'll let you make your choice whether you want to give the budget update first or the COVID-19 report first.
We're gonna, we'll get right into the COVID board update. Um, so what I'm planning on doing is I have multiple people that are going to be involved in this process. So, um, the plan, just to give you an update on where we're at with the planning, um, you know, Tracy has really spearheaded putting the template together that you guys are going to be seeing hopefully by the end of the week. So you have it over the weekend. Uh, prior to the 20th meeting, which is next Monday, uh, we have a few more areas we're just, we're, uh, refining and a couple of meetings we're trying to get done between now and the end of the week so that we can, um, so that we can have that ready to go. Uh, the, the important thing that people have to remember in the plan, and we'll make sure it's in the beginning of the plan, is, uh, that it's, um, it's fluid. It's a living document. It could change. And, um, you know, it's just something that, you know, it's, with the, given the information that we have right now, this is our plan, but two weeks from now, that information could change and we're going to have to adjust the plan, you know, uh, you know, as we, as we work through that. Um, when we think about the, uh, timeline on some of the decisions that we're making, we've held quite a few meetings, um, to talk about everything from masks, uh, to screening to PPE. We've talked about our positive case protocols, communication protocols. Uh, we've led meetings about clear office barriers, uh, locations. We've talked about the fall musical and how we could potentially make that happen. Uh, you know, I know Dave and Jen and principals have been working on the technology needs. We started to look at revamping our, our welcome back. Uh, so that, you know, obviously we're probably not going to bring all the staff back into one building like we've done in the past. Um, and then, uh, one of the areas that, that is, is really obviously one of the more intensive areas happens to be, uh, obviously the way we deliver instruction. Uh, we've had a lot of different people involved in those conversations. Uh, Dave, I'm gonna love him, uh, you know, kind of talk a little bit because we had some, some great meetings today. So Dave, you want to give kind of an update on that and how that has gone?
Yeah, you bet. So we're starting what we call our return to learn meetings and what those, um, those are intended to have each of the curricular teams at each level dig in and start to figure out how we would operate, operationalize some of these bigger decisions that we're making. So we're making decisions or going through the process anyway, making decisions that obviously will impact what school looks like when we come back. Um, those decisions, as Nick said, are fluid, but we need to get each one of our curricular teams thinking about that. So what we do, we set up a system where we have, um, teachers from each level and each curricular area. The total of 44 separate teams that will be needing, meeting over the course of the next couple of weeks. We had the first four, uh, today. And the idea is to say, what will it look like, given our parameters, if we're fully virtual, fully online, or somewhere in between? And how does that look different, say, in middle school English language arts versus elementary music versus high school CTE? So we have teacher leaders from each one of those groups involved. Um, at the high school is department heads. At the middle school, it's their PLC leads. At the elementary level, it's the committee members from each one of the different corresponding, um, curricular areas. And then we have building administrators, again, representing the different groups that they work with most closely. And then our teaching and learning team. It's been especially rewarding this year or this, um, week and today especially with Ivy Wheeler being able to lead some of those meetings. So our new, um, assistant director of secondary teaching and learning, doing an absolutely fabulous job. It's very rewarding to work with our team. So Lisa Scoian, Ivy Wheeler, Jen Lotzi, um, along with all the building leaders, getting a lot done, working very hard. But it's very rewarding watching teachers come back so excited just to talk about what might this look like and to provide input. Um, it's been nice to get a teacher's voice back in the conversation. It's, um, woefully absent during the spring just because everything was so just fast and furious that we didn't have enough time to engage the people we, the way we'd like to. It's nice now to have that opportunity to do that. You're muted.
Thanks, Dave. Yep. Thanks, Dave. Um, so, you know, obviously that's a big piece of what we're delivering, the instructional side of the house. Obviously, there's a lot of operational side, but, you know, those are, uh, you know, some big pieces. And so there will be parts of the, uh, of our kind of reopening school or return to learn type of, of planning that will still be, you know, they might be quite general yet, and some of the details are going to be looked out throughout the month of August. But we're going to have them in there so that people know that we are looking at these things. So it's not if, you know, uh, for example, we haven't had the conversation about what recess is going to look like at the elementary. Um, and that's a conversation that's going to be coming up in the next few weeks. It just won't be ready for, uh, Monday. And so, um, you know, those, those are kind of the things that we're, we're working through. Uh, there are a lot of different meetings that are going on and, and we're really working through that. The other piece of, on the, on the template that Tracy's put together is, you know, it starts off, it'll talk about our guiding principles, what we've used to kind of guide all of our decisions. And the lens in which we're trying to look at our decisions and working through those things. And so, um, really, uh, really looking forward to getting that to the board and, and getting that to the public here before it's long. Um, as we keep moving through, uh, Tim and I, uh, met with, uh, the architects from, uh, WOLD about our facility, um, facility planning committee, sorry, drawing a blank. Uh, and in, in talking with them and, and the discussion, we think that probably right now, our best thing to do, because we never got that committee off the ground, um, is, uh, you know, to probably shoot for more like, uh, January. They've been telling us that a lot of districts are kind of delaying things in the fall, shooting more for a January start date, uh, on the committees. And so that's kind of our, our plan. Conversations, the architects will be reaching out to the different principals and having conversations about educational adequacy and things like that over the course of the fall. But we really wanted to stay away from September in general. Uh, we just, there's a lot on the plate right now. And so we just want to really make sure that we're giving everything that attention needs. As far as the school start time committee, uh, Tracy, you were gonna talk about that.
Sure. So Dave, Aaron and I will be connecting with the school start time committee before the end of this month to check in with them and find out how they would like to move forward for this school year, whether that's, uh, you know, maybe, uh, they're comfortable coming together face to face or looking at, um, the virtual meetings, um, or postponing. But I, I think it's important that they provide the direction as far as how do we move forward this year.
And, and the biggest difference between that and the facility one is just they, they've been up and running. They've had several meetings, whereas we, we hadn't even selected the committee to start. And so, um, we'll continue, what, what we'll probably end up doing is putting out new invites for the facility committee as we get closer to that and getting it up and running. But it was, uh, I think we talked about, uh, yesterday, this morning, I guess, everything's kind of running together. And I think, you know, Dave and Tracy saying, and that, hey, let's see what the committee wants to do to kind of dictate our direction. I think it's a good choice. Um, one of the things that I think, uh, we're all finding out is, uh, that this, uh, trying to start back to school is all consuming. Um, it is a lot of meetings. It is a lot of, uh, planning. Um, and I know that I originally, you know, told the board, I think by September 14th, I can have a full equity kind of, not necessarily plan, but like a plan of action. I, I just, I can't guarantee I can get that done between now and the 14th of September. So what I guess, what I'm respectfully asking the board that, that maybe we could, you know, extend that deadline by about a month. Um, not because there's any lack of interest or anything like that. It's just right now, um, just about everything we're doing has to do with, can we open? Can we not open? What's it look like when we open? What's it mean for staff and everything else like that? Um, and that's really been our focus. And so, um, if, if the board members are okay, understand it's not putting off or, or not trying to not do it. It's just, uh, I don't think, uh, I can give it the time that it deserves right at this exact moment. Uh, and I can't, you know, ask the other folks on our team to do that because they're all cranking as much as they can. So if you guys are all right, I just would like to push that to the October meeting instead of the September meeting, if you guys are okay with that. Knowing that it's, it's not a back.
Would you like feedback on that now, Nick?
Yeah, that'd be great. Fine by me, Nick. This is Rob.
Okay. All right. Rob's weighed in. Others?
Our, this is Bruce. I, I think our priority should be getting kids back to school if we can and. I think that should take, uh, front seat right now. If, if you can move it up, Nick, I mean, if you see like there's a better path and, and you can find a way to make it happen and let us know.
I would agree, Nick. I hate to push it back, but I also want to give you the ability to give it the thought that I know you would like to. So if that means waiting a month to take care of the return to school first, then that's what needs to happen. Yeah.
I'm supportive of, you know, uh, letting it roll a little bit into, uh, October. That sounds fine with me.
All right. And Bob?
I'm, I'm in agreement as well. That's fine.
Okay. And we've got, uh, Kerry will be joining us soon. There she is. I see her. And, uh, Kerry, we're just talking about getting the equity plan of action proposal from Nick, probably in October, one of our two meetings in October, rather than September, just given everything that needs to be done prior to September 3rd.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And I guess I'm, I'm on par with that as well. Not again, because anything is necessarily more important, less important. I do know that equity though is something that we've got, uh, very strong consensus among board members that we want to work on, and it's not going to be something that we want to rush. Uh, nor is it going to be something that we rushed, get our meeting over with on it and then say, there aren't we great, we did something and then put it back on the shelf. It's going to be something that will be discussed for months and months. And, uh, I, I think that getting the, the buy-in of the community is really, really important. So getting the correct buy-in and everything. So I, I guess you've got your, your directive there. We don't have to, uh, necessarily consider that a deadline, deadline, because it happens to be the same night as the annual meeting and a few other things that will be at, at that point, um, in September.
Um, as we continue to kind of push through on updates related to COVID, uh, one of the things that, uh, we're wanting to do, uh, what's become pretty evident to us this summer, probably more than any other summer, is, you know, we always know we've had lots of kids in our buildings throughout the course of the summer, but, um, you know, we, we haven't had much in the way of, uh, we've, we've been getting health support from our nurses in the summer, but it's been more because they're willing to just do it versus, um, having them be around all summer long. And when we're talking about having, you know, thousands of kids in our buildings on a, basically all year long, you know, one of the things that we want to look at doing is, is changing our, our nursing positions to a, a year round, a 260, um, uh, contract. So that they are, they can continue to be our connection with public health. You know, one of the things that we're finding is we have to have, we need to really have a single point of contact, especially when it comes to positive COVID cases. Um, wanting to get information from the district as they want to do, um, uh, try, uh, it's not tracking. Why am I drawing a blank on it? Um, contact tracing and things like that. And so, you know, if it's going to be the nurses all the way through the year and, and these protocols, we would like to probably try to have that be consistent all summer long. One of the things that'll be coming to you at the next meeting would be moving them from their, they, they already have an extended contract, but extending it to the full 260. Um, you, you know, there is some costs associated with it. Uh, however, the other thing that we're finding out is, um, you know, we're probably not looking at quite as many custodians as we were originally anticipating. However, we're going to have to add custodial support. There's just no doubt about it. Um, because of the increased cleaning needs, stuff like that. But, um, there, it'll be, you know, the, the increase in, in nursing costs will be more than offset by, you know, maybe not as much custodial addition as what we were originally thinking. And a lot of that has to do with, um, uh, the, uh, the change in direction that we're getting as we're getting feedback from CDC, from public health that, you know, surfaces, although they're important, they're becoming less important as aerosol and, and, and things like that. And so, you know, this is that whole kind of adjusting on the fly as we look through some of the stuff. And so we're still going to be obviously raising the bar as it relates to cleaning. So we're going to need some additional staff there, but probably maybe not the full mine that we were originally anticipating. Um, so even, you know, uh, we'll be able to offset some of that nursing cost, but it's, it's going to be important that, that we have health support all summer long when we're running radio elite, summer school, summer swim, school age care, all of those components.
Mr. President? Nick, you want, um, and Rob, I'll get to that. Rob has a question on this and I think, uh, maybe I'm not reading his mind, but, uh, if you, um, could just tell us the, the downside, other than the financial impact on the nursing thing, is there any downside? And when do you need to know? Is this something that you need consensus on tonight? For us to take formal action next week or, you know, changing of these contracts from the number of days?
So it, it would, it would go in as part of the personnel pack next week. Um, you know, if you guys are feeling comfortable enough, um, and if you have additional questions, you can always call me this week and we can talk through some of those things too. But, uh, you know, uh, down, I, we don't see the downside. I mean, we see it as upside because it's, it's going to be providing more service to our kids. Um, but it, our nurses are valuable resources to us in the district and, um, you know, part of, somebody might say, why not just have one of them be a 260 and one of them not? Um, and it's just, there's two nurses. And the biggest reason is we want to always kind of have a nurse working in the district. So one's gone, vacation or things like that. We always want to have a nurse on, or on staff. And part of the reason is, uh, this, this COVID has really kind of stepped that up because of the different protocols that we're putting in place with communication and things like that. Go ahead, Rob.
So two, two questions. One, just to, I guess, clarify, you had said that we have two nurses district wide, is that right? Okay. And then, uh, once COVID at some point, um, is behind us, do you envision these contracts being permanent at 260 year round?
You know, it's something that we'll have to talk about. I think one of the things that we've been pretty fortunate on is, um, and it could be just luck, is, you know, we, we have not, uh, utilized a lot of health support in the summer, even though we've had thousands of kids in our buildings. And, you know, it's kind of one of those knock on wood, you know, type of things. We, we haven't had too many issues. Um, so I think it would be something that we would revisit and look at that, um, you know, if we would, you know, need to reduce days down. But, uh, as we do with any position, um, and part of our thing is we, we just don't know when COVID is going away. I think, you know, as, as I was going to talk with, uh, you know, one of the parts of this is the public health update. Um, you know, is there a chance that there's going to be a vaccine available by the end of this, this current year? Yes, there's, there's a chance. But the likelihood of almost any of our kids being eligible for it, or a vast majority of our staff is highly unlikely because it's going to go, from what we're hearing from public health, they're going to tier the, you know, whose priority on it. So I mean, we could be, we could be looking at, you know, potentially two years or more before we're at a point where we feel like, okay, COVID's just kind of seasonal, you know, almost like, like we are with, with, um, with influenza. So I mean, we're definitely probably going to be in this for the long haul. There's, um, there's, uh, although we don't want to be doom and gloom, but we also want to be realistic with people, let them know that it's not about just getting to December or just getting to January. I know you weren't implying that, but I'm just saying, you know, it, it could be multiple summers that we would need, need this type of support.
What was your second question? I see that Sue has a question, so I want to get to that.
I have my two questions. Yeah. No, my first question was to confirm that we had two nurses. Yep.
Okay, got it. All right. Great. Thank you for your questions, Sue.
Yeah, I was just gonna remind ourselves that, you know, nurses not only deliver care, but they're a big part of patient education. So I think, uh, they'll be a very welcome, uh, personnel, um, on the scene, especially as we face this, the unknowns this year.
Okay. And they, and they've been putting a lot of hours in. I mean, they've been putting a lot of hours in even, you know, long beyond the, the contract days and things like that. And so, uh, this isn't something where they came to us and said, hey, is there any way we could look at adding days? This is something that we talked about, what are the needs of the district? And then we went to them and said, this is something that we're thinking of proposing to the board. So, um, and, and it really, it is about, about making sure that we are, we have a consistent, um, process in place, whether we're in summer school or we're in, uh, the regular school year, which is. So with that being said, uh, Dave, you want to give an update? We had a first day, a full-fledged day of summer school?
Yeah, yeah. I'll give an update. It was a glorious day. Um, you know, it was, it was pretty cool last week to see the high school kids back. But there's nothing like seeing the elementary kids back the first time in the building after a long time. The excitement and the energy was absolutely wonderful. Um, it was, it was fun. I, I started my day at EP Rock and this shouldn't be so rewarding, but being able just to help an elementary kid find their, their class for summer school and the excitement, just absolutely wonderful. Um, that does not mean without complication. It's been, um, it's been quite a journey to get here. I want to start with some recognition. First of all, um, Anita Stillwell and Annette Kelly in the teaching and learning department have absolutely knocked it out of the park with the planning. Um, Sandy had, um, four years taken quite a leadership role with summer school, and it was one of those things that she did a really nice job with. And I honestly didn't get all that involved. But with everything between COVID and just transitioning, I was much more involved in summer school and, um, made me aware of just how hard I needed a network to get that all done. Also, um, all the principals, uh, and some are here, so thank you, principals, worked really hard to make sure it was successful. Um, so not, we don't have summer school in all of our sites, but I sent a text out, I don't know, it was pretty early in the morning. I sent a text out to elementary principals saying, hey, we got a few things going on here. We could use the help and they all responded. So we had, um, we had district administrators, principals onsite helping. Um, and then obviously big thanks to the teachers who take the time to sign up for summer school and do the work. I think their excitement was almost as energizing as the kids, seeing teachers just excited to be back in the classroom, doing their thing, connecting with kids. Um, so having said all that, I'll take a quick look at the numbers, give you some, a, a quick update of where we are. Um, we were, we had a total, well, we will have a total, um, enrollment in summer school, about 1,233 kids. That's down from about 1569 last year. Um, we expected to be down, actually a few of our programs like Raider Elite and, um, and then also our middle school enrichment actually helped keep that up a little bit. But, um, overall, I'm pretty satisfied with those numbers. There were a lot of things that pushed on keeping those numbers, um, where we'd like to see them eventually. One, class size limitations. As a response to COVID, we wanted to make sure that especially in the summer school, as we're getting a feel for how this whole thing works, that we were, um, maximizing physical distancing. So we limited class sizes to 12. Typically, that's actually the minimum we run. Um, so it was sort of flipping that on its head a little bit. So that limited numbers and it was tough. It, it's always tough to recruit teachers in summer school. There's so many competing priorities and schedules and so forth. Um, but obviously with everything going on this year, it became a little bit more challenging. Um, really pleased with the attendance. So we're running about a 95% attendance rate across all our programs in terms of the kids that had enrolled and were confirmed and then actually showed up for summer school. So that was, that was great to see. Um, a lot of things we want to adjust and we're learning as we go through this process. Um, there's, we have a lot of capacity for really, um, improving, refining and expanding our summer programming. And we've got a lot of great people on board to do that. I know that, uh, the whole teaching and learning team is excited to debrief probably midterm through summer school, not wait till it's all the way done, but then start the debriefing so we can plan for next year. Um, learn from what we've done this year, but also implement some of those programs we're hoping to in the future. So that's a quick look at summer school.
Questions from board members on summer school. I have one. Dave, you mentioned about the maximum capacity of the classes. Uh, how many teachers are we looking at that, um, we're employing as summer school instructors, um, on the high school and then on the other levels?
Oh, I, I wish I had that data for you at the tip of my fingers. I don't have it, but I can get that for you. Um,
Just ballpark, just ballpark.
Oh, ballpark. Um, if we look at just regular summer school, we're looking at, um, probably two to three. I know, let's say, I guess, four per grade level band. So 12, probably 24 to 25 elementary enrichment teachers. Um, middle school, that number's quite a bit smaller, probably six or seven. Um, and then high school is primarily credit recovery, along with some of the special programs like Raider Elite and Marching Band. But setting those aside, a lot of it is, um, credit recovery. So at the high school, you get a lot bigger numbers per certified teacher, but then there's assistance and those programs are broken into smaller numbers with other individuals. Um, summer swim also typically larger numbers. We had to bring those way down to meet our physical distancing expectations.
Okay. Uh, my follow-up question was probably more important than just, uh, exact numbers, but, um, would, would we plan to get feedback from our summer school instructors on all the different levels as far as input for a plan in the fall?
Yes, absolutely. And, and we've talked about that from the beginning. Uh, Nick used the term a couple of times, sort of dipping our toe in the water a little bit with summer school. It's a way we can sort of acclimate ourselves to what does this look like to provide instruction in this COVID environment? And yes, getting feedback from those instructors, especially the instructors that are our teachers. We have a lot of instructors that are our teachers that come back for the summer. We also have some that aren't our regular teachers, but especially from those that are our teachers, we definitely want to get that feedback. Actually, we're collecting, uh, not real specific feedback, but more general feedback on a daily form that teachers fill out to let us know how some of our, um, strategies for risk mitigation and those sorts of things, um, are being implemented. There's also an opportunity for some more open-ended information.
Excellent. Other board members that have maybe questions for Dave? And.
Mr. President?
Yes. Rob?
Yeah, it, not so much a question for Dave, just, I wanted to, as we're going through the COVID update, just wanted to say thanks to Tracy and to Nick for the communication that went out to our parents. Just letting everybody know where we're at with, um, planning for September. Granted, wasn't much of an update, but the fact that we are trying to keep them in the loop. Uh, I, I got nothing but positive feedback, just for them to know that we're at least thinking about it was, uh, was a plus. So thanks to both of them for, for that effort.
All right. And other board members' comments? And Nick, I suppose, do you have still more on the COVID or are we ready?
Well, yeah, just, just a couple of items here. You know, public health update, had a meeting today with public health. Uh, St. Croix County obviously is seeing an uptick, if you're following it at all, in cases. Um, however, uh, they, they seem to be mildly symptomatic is what they told us today on the cases. And so, um, they, they really haven't changed their guidance to us at all. Um, and so they're, they're going to continue, we're continuing to push for some additional feedback on mitigation methods and, and measures and things like that. Um, but, uh, and that's why I say we, I'm saying all of the St. Croix County superintendents. Um, and so we'll, we'll continue to kind of keep you informed of that. I, one of the things I told them is we will, uh, St. Croix County is not necessarily wanting to approve school reopening plans. Uh, however, we'll send them a copy of our reopening plan so that they have it and then keep them updated, uh, for it. We are working with them, um, on what contact tracing looks like, uh, once we start back at school and also trying to really define what a considered a close contact. And, uh, you know, as of right now, our, our stance as a school district, it is St. Croix County that determines who is considered a close contact. Cause remember, then once you've been determined, you've been, uh, deemed a close contact, then that's what starts that 14-day clock of, of needing to self-quarantine. And so really it's important that St. Croix County, you know, is involved in that, um, and, and the parameters that go with that. The last piece I want to share, uh, with the board, um, and I'm going to share a screen, maybe, if I have a mouse. Is, uh, can you guys see my survey, is the screen with the survey on it? Yes, okay. Um, so what we have, uh, we, you know, we put out the parent survey, it closed. I, I believe it closed the end of day yesterday, Sunday. Um, we had, uh, 3,500 parents that filled it out, uh, and 584 staff members that filled it out, filled out the survey. Um, so you can kind of see that in that slide. Um, the, the, the parent responded information, um, you can see that we had good distribution of age levels represented. You know, if you look at, you know, what age, basically what grade are kids going to be in? Uh, so that it wasn't just, okay, these are only high school parents filling it out or only elementary parents filling it out. Um, we had good grade, I mean, right around the 400 to 500 mark in just about every area except 4K, 5K. Your, uh, 4K was a little bit less than that, but you know, 5K, which would be our regular kindergarten, um, uh, had almost 400 as well. So, uh, good representation and even the buildings, um, broke out, uh, quite well. And some people say, well, if I add up all those percentages, they equal more than 100. The thing that people have to keep in mind is, um, you know, parents may have kids in multiple buildings. And so that's why it, it's going to equal more than 100. Um, but then you go into the actual questions that we ask parents. And again, sorry, this is staying a little bit. Um, when we asked the question, you know, if we have in-person schools starting starting first with reasonable mitigation practices in place, would you send your child to school? 74.7% said yes. About 3.6% said no, and about 22% or 21.7 said, you know, I'm not sure. I need some more information. And some of those folks are needing to see what does our plan look like? Um, and, and see what that, what that is. Uh, as we look at, you know, what, what would you prefer based on, based on your family situation? Um, the overwhelming majority would prefer, uh, 100% face-to-face instruction, but at the very least, um, have alternate days, you know, so that there is face-to-face instruction to some extent. And so as we're, as we're looking at these things, we did give people, uh, options to, you know, put in uh, other and comments. And we started to look through, you know, look through the comments. I mean, we get everything from 100% in person, no mask, that people are putting to, um, you know, I want, you know, especially my special ed student or child, uh, full-time, any option would work for the others, you know, so this is a variety of, a variety of different, these are just the comments related to that one question. Um, then as we, as we move down, um, I'd feel more comfortable if my child attends school if, and all that apply, you know, we asked about student masks, student mask, staff and mask. You know, the, the highest one is building safety measures and policies, including temperature checks are in place. The temperature checks is, is, is really what we're hearing from public health, what we're hearing from our own nurses and what we're hearing from our, uh, insurance is the temperature screening, you're, you're better off doing, you know, telling parents, this is what your self-screen should look like at home. Um, versus trying to make sure you're catching every single person that goes in the building all the time. But I think, um, you know, we look at that, social distancing is the second highest, trying to make sure that we're, we're trying to social distance the best of our ability. Um, you know, and you even had some people that, um, that want to, you know, stay remote until vaccines develop. So I mean, you, you have kind of, you know, the whole gamut as we look at this. I think, um, we also were looking at childcare issues, you know, about 20% of our parents said, if we didn't go every day, it would create childcare issues for them. Um, and so that, that's something to keep in mind. A lot of times people will say, well, uh, couldn't you just add, just then couldn't we provide the childcare? Well, then if we're going to provide the childcare, then might as well have them in school, um, as we're, as we're bringing people together. Um, we did ask quite a few questions about transportation and the biggest reason behind that was that's probably the one area we're not going to be able to do the social distancing based on the, the guidance. And so, you know, right now, um, you know, about 40% of our parents that, that are eligible, um, said they wouldn't, they probably, or would use district transportation. So some of the things that we're going to have in place will be almost like, okay, we'll run regular transportation routes, but only half the kids are planning on riding anyway. We're not going to look at cutting routes in order to get more efficient. We'd leave the routes in place that they're, they're there, but it would allow us to spread kids out more on the bus. We'll be looking at things like, um, uh, assigned seats, families sitting together, things along those lines. Um, so I thought it was interesting. We did ask about extracurriculars. If, if, uh, if your kids had previously participated, would you allow them to continue to participate? Almost 70% said yes, 10% said no, and then about 22 again undecided. You know, and a lot of that is because a lot of the stuff is changing on a daily basis. Uh, and then one of our other big areas that's a challenge for us is the cafeterias and trying to socially distance with the cafeterias. Um, you know, if we can't get kids six feet apart, would you still be comfortable with your kid eating in the cafeteria? You know, we have 25% of our parents saying no. Um, so we're, we're starting that brainstorming. I think we have a meeting on the 15th. Is that right, Tim? Where we're going to be talking about cafeteria stuff? Yep.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay. Uh, and so we'll be able to kind of hammer out. So even if we can't maybe fully socially distance, we may be able to put other types of barriers in place in order to, um, you know, to, to do that. Um, we did ask, you know, we did, just to give people an idea, um, we did ask that question at the end as to, um, you know, what, what else would you like us to know? What other feedback would you like? I'm, I, that's, these are all the responses, the open-ended responses. And as I scroll through this, just to give you an idea, I think it's somewhere in the neighborhoods of a couple of hundred pages of comments, uh, that we'll have to dig through. Um, you know, everything from, I can see no reason why children and staff would not be wearing masks to, um, hand sanitizing to, um, you know, we have people in here, uh, saying things like, you know, please don't put anybody a mask or my kids aren't going to wear masks. I mean, so we have the whole gamut. So I guess the moral of the story of this is understand that no matter what the board decides and, and what we recommend, you will have people that will be emailing you saying, how could you possibly, you know, approve that or, you know, so what we're trying to do is we put our plan together is, you know, obviously we know the value of having face-to-face instruction. We believe there's value in that. Uh, but we're doing the best we can to do what we think is reasonable to mitigate risk to our kids and our staff. You know, we, we can't, we can't guarantee 100% safety. We couldn't guarantee 100% safety prior to COVID hitting. So I think it's, you know, that's why you'll see in our plan and, and a lot of the conversations that we have, we spend a lot of time talking about risk mitigation, uh, versus safe environment because, you know, when we talk to some of the health folks, they say, you know, sometimes using the word safe environment, it gives people a false sense of security that, okay, we've, we've guaranteed a COVID-free environment and, and the reality is we can't guarantee a COVID-free environment, just like we can't guarantee an influenza-free environment or a pertussis-free environment or measles-free. I mean, we'll do everything we can to mitigate, but, but we can't guarantee those things. We did have some questions for staff. Um, and, and really the, the, the big question is, you know, if we came back on a, on a part-time basis, would this create childcare issues for you? And about, almost 20% of our staff said yes. You know, so you can imagine if kids aren't back full-time, but teachers are expected to be full-time, you know, it does create some childcare issues. Uh, similar to what, similar to what some of our parents said as well. So, um, and, you know, again, we have lots of, lots of different comments, uh, from staff and kind of going through these and making sure, you know, what are their concerns and, and, you know, what do you see as big challenges and things along those lines? So, um, questions about, uh, that's basically the COVID, COVID update. Any questions for me?
Uh, Bruce?
It's just curious, and I, I don't know that there's a way to do this, but, um, are we tracking how many kids in our district have had positive cases at this point in time and um, what sort of, um, tracking mechanisms and, and measures are we just going to put in place to understand, you know, those that have been maybe exposed to it already at this point in time?
Yeah, so we're, we're, we just, actually that just kind of came up, uh, with our meeting with public health today. Um, is trying to understand who's going to be a close contact, who's not, um, and who's had it. You know, I mean, right now, as far as us knowing if it's kids in our district that have it, it's, it's, it's parents calling us and telling us that they, that they've had it. We're, we haven't gotten that information necessarily from public health, but I think that's shifting. Um, they want to review, uh, with their legal counsel on how much they can share information-wise, uh, to not violate people's, uh, people's HIPAA, um, privacy, uh, because the other piece is as of right now, unless they tell us who the close contacts are, you know, so let's say they have a positive case. Um, it's somebody that doesn't, doesn't go to school here. Uh, maybe it's a college student that lives at home. But they might have, let's say, brothers and sisters that are also at home. We would have, you know, they, they would say, okay, you guys are close contacts. We would have no eye, no way of knowing that those are close contacts and are not allowed, you know, really not allowed to come to school for 14 days. Um, and so it would become an honor system thing. And I think what public health is trying to look at and say, okay, maybe we need to move beyond the honor system and say, okay, here's your list of close contacts that should be out of your building until this date. So that we don't end up having huge outbreaks in buildings. So, you know, hey, you have this third grader that needs, you know, they have a, they're considered a close contact. They need to be out of your building. So if they show up in your building on Monday, you know, you really need to tell them they, they, they need to do the virtual instruction for the 14 days. That takes a tremendous amount of, of, uh, coordination because we're not the only district in St. Croix County. Um, and it takes, um, as you can imagine, a lot of contractual things as far as being able to legally share that types of information. Anytime you're trying to exchange health information on individuals, um, we have to make sure only certain people have that information and they can do certain things with it. So, um, we're, we're getting there. We're just not, we're not there quite yet, but we still have about six weeks. So we're feeling like we will get there.
Ms. President?
Yes, Rob?
So Nick, uh, it's, it's convenient that we have Jim on, you know, our, in our Zoom meeting. Um, you mentioned briefly that the labor that we are, we talked about before might be a little bit less. Um, I suspect just from a material standpoint, cleaning supplies and what have you might be a bit more. Are you prepared to maybe talk at a high level? What that might look like at this point?
You know, I think Jim threw a number out to me last week, Jim, of a ballpark figure of what you were anticipating additional cleaning supplies and hand sanitizer and mask and things like that was going to cost. Do you remember what that was?
Um, you know, I hate to even throw anything out there right now because, you know, like you had said earlier, th- this thing is so fluid and so dynamic, it, it literally is changing twice a week. Um, you know, we're, we're still developing strategies based on a lot of the feedback that we're getting and based on the, the situational things changing, but we're, we're going to spend money. We, we've already spent money on additional supplies. I, I, I don't think it would be, um, foolish to expect us to be spending, you know, maybe in excess of $200,000 on additional supplies for this school year, um, based on COVID between hand sanitizer and disinfectant and gloves and, and that's just the cleaning stuff. That doesn't even include the masks and all the other types of things that we're procuring. And that, that's to date what we've done. I mean, it's.
That's what we've already spent, right, Jim?
Oh, no, I don't think we spent 200 yet, but, um, we've probably spent 100. We've probably spent 100, 110, somewhere in there.
You know, just, just for example, you know, Jim was talking about, if we try to put a bottle of hand sanitizer, him and I were talking about this, a bottle, a big bottle of hand sanitizer in every, basically every room, and let's say we had to swap that out every week, once a week. It's about $240,000 with a hand sanitizer. Is that the number you came up with or did you give me?
Correct.
That's just hand sanitizer. Um, so we're trying to look at, okay, other ways we can, you know, maybe buy in bulk and refill, or there are other, other, other things we can do, but that's going to have a labor cost associated with it. And so, you know, it, it is going to be changing, but I mean, I would say that, you know, we would anticipate that we could be north of a million dollars when it's all said and done, uh, by the end of the year. We ordered our first 50,000 disposable masks. That was about $15,000. Is that right, Jim? Somewhere around there?
Correct. Yeah, we, we have about 31 cents, about 31 cents a mask delivered.
Um, plus we have about another 30,000 reusable mask, um, you know, through either things we've acquired or the state has given us. So, I mean, it's, we're trying to, we're trying to buy a lot of the stuff that we can, but we also don't want to, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of like, uh, we don't want to buy so much of it just so that we have it ready for 12 months from now. So then all of a sudden you have somebody else that doesn't have anything available now because we bought 12 months of supply of it. So it's a balancing act between, you know, pushing too hard, but making sure we have enough on, on hand on this stuff. But, um, it's, it's going to be expensive. I mean, I, I, I would anticipate that we're going to be in you know, uh, seven figures, uh, the impact of COVID for the school year.
All right, Sue, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'll make it quick. Um, it, in terms of risk mitigation, is it possible for us to consider, um, math, with regarding masks? To have like this is a mask-wearing area, uh, rather than an, an either-or, uh, have some designated times when masks are expected to be worn, for example, passing classes when there's a lot of currents of movement and so on. And, and students and staff would get used to, um, you know, having them with them at all times?
Yeah, I mean, um, so we had a group of, of, it was our principals, cabinet team that talked about, you know, kind of what is our direction going to be on mask-wearing? You know, and that'll be outlined in the plan. I mean, and it's, yeah, and it's fluid. I would say, you know, and that's one of the things that we'll put in the plan. We reserve the right to change this basically in five days from now as it, as it changes. But yeah, I mean, there are some areas that we're going to strongly encourage. There are going to be other areas where a certain staff will be required. Um, there's, there's a variety of different things that we're looking at. We haven't gotten to the passing time discussion yet. Um, and, and some of those comment areas, discussions, and that, that's, those are coming up here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Other board member questions, comments? Bob?
Yeah, I was wondering if we've talked numerous times about increasing the air, uh, exchange in the buildings, those common areas especially. Um, are there any concerns that with other people going back to school and most, uh, companies and factories and everything, uh, doing that, that the supply chain with, with, uh, rooftop filters, things would be a problem? Could that ever be a concern where we just can't get those items?
Uh, Jim, I don't know if you want to address that as far as supplies or filters and things?
Yeah, absolutely. You bet, Bob. That's a real concern. And we're going to do our best to get everything we can get. We, we're working, you know, with WOLD now on a couple of different strategies we might be able to employ. We've currently tripled our, our minimum air settings right now. Um, you know, when it was moderate, we had them at 100%. Then, you know, you got into weeks like. Then, you know, you got into weeks like last week and you you just couldn't run them at a hundred percent and and keep the buildings comfortable. Um, I'm a little worried when it gets twenty below too, that running at a hundred percent fresh air is going to be the way to go. I I know the systems are designed for it. But boy, you are flying without a net there. I, you know, you have one little problem and you're going to have a frozen coil. So we're we're working with WOLD. We we, like I said, we've increased our minimums threefold. Um, we're pushing we're we're going to push it right to the limit and uh, and and we're waiting to hear what WOLD has to say about different types of filtration and stuff too. I I don't think that, you know, wh- when you start talking about things like UV, I I don't know that that's realistic, certainly for this school year. Um, I don't know that that's been a recommendation that they're going to have, but um, as soon as as soon as we get it figured out, what they want, what they suggest, we increase our filtration too. We're going to get right on it. But yeah, it's that's a real concern that everybody's going after the same thing. And it's no different with the filters than it is with anything else. The hand sanitizer, paper towels, hand soap, plastic bags, trigger sprayers, spray bays, tough to get everything right now.
Thanks, Jim.
All right. Thanks for your answer, Jim, and any other board members? Okay. Well, I appreciate the report and just comment that, you know, we not speaking for other board members, but I would hope that the public can appreciate. Uh, us board members have already been receiving emails from parents. Many times will get diametrically opposed, polar opposite emails within an hour of each other saying that we can't believe how you would consider ever conducting school. And then another one an hour later saying, I can't believe you would ever consider uh, requiring masks or, you know, doing any kind of you know, and and some people not understand why we don't have a plan in place already and so forth. Folks have to understand this is not going to be easy decisions. Um, for those that expect us to have a plan in place already, I'm sorry, we're trying to do this right. And uh, that there's not going to be any plan that is set in stone that we cannot alter. We have to set standards that include the words feasible, practical, reasonable, uh, rather than, you know, what we want in a perfect world. That there, we're not going to have a perfect world and we're going to have to expose our kids to some risks. That's just the reality if we're going to have face to face teaching. And so I appreciate all the work going into this, and I also appreciate that we're not going to have a plan that's set in stone next week, and it may look different by the time we get to September third. So any anyone else want to add on to those comments? All right, uh, then I guess next up would be budget update, Nick.
Yeah, I'll turn it over to Tim, Tim Erickson.
Yeah, so this will be really quick. Um, so July first, the state came out with their their estimate uh, of state aid for next year. And so when we look at where Hudson fell, we we're gonna, we're the estimate anyway at this point is to go up about two hundred sixty five thousand in state aid. Uh, and then there would be an offset um, to to the levy, you know, if we if that's what the direction we go. But uh, really, no other impact than that. We'll bring another update to you in the preliminary budget uh, on Monday, next Monday, the twentieth.
And just just to clarify, uh, because Tim and his team have been doing a great job tracking all these different components. So that two hundred and sixty thousand, that basically it's like we're not getting hit as bad. So we're still anticipating almost a nine hundred thousand dollar reduction in state aid. It's just Tim, Tim estimated about what about a one point one, six million, kind of somewhere around there, reduction stated. So we're we're better than we, we're not as bad as we thought it was going to be, but uh, you know, right now, the plan would be to, you know, offset the mill rate with that. So, um, because what we don't know is we could have it swing. I think Tim said it swung six figures before the in the, what is it, the August estimates or what is it the?
Well, the October fifteenth is the next, is the final, yeah. So, yeah, it can, it can really change. It's dependent, very dependent on uh, districts across the state and what their spending levels are, what their final numbers look like uh, after the month, once they close out. So um, it's very interdependent on those types of things. So that's that's one of the reasons you get, you're going to have some, a lot of fluctuation.
Well, that and the new tax deadline is Wednesday, right? So
Yep, right, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments then about the board, about the budget update, which uh, thank you, Tim, for your prognostication up to this point and, you know, um, I know there's still a lot of work before this is final and even what we approve in September uh, may have to be changed, given what happens down in Madison. You never know what that might be. All right, then we can move on to reports. And we have, now, Nick, I can um, take a stab. I see no names next to the reports. That's why I'm going to start off with the one I'm pretty confident on facilities and maintenance, and that would be Mstaisco.
That is correct.
Okay.
I apologize for being muted. Uh, so I I listed some higher points here. Uh, you know, in addition to these, there were dozens and dozens of other smaller projects that didn't make the list. And and then, of course, all the daily work that's done, you know, in the facilities um, during the school year and then turning it over for the summer. But you know, uh, well, the first thing listed was we made some pretty significant improvements to the pool facility. Um, we increased the ventilation capabilities and we added some preheat coils to the fresh air intake that we can run our fresh air at a higher rate in the winter. We added a UV sanitation system to reduce the amount of combined chlorine. Uh, we we repaired the shallow end diffusers to allow for better pool circulation and turnover. And then uh, just very recently replaced the pool um, over the or the pool roof over the pool. And we repaired the south wall, which had some staining from the previous roof leaking. Um, we did about fifteen thousand square feet of carpet for the district, and that's about equates to about twenty classrooms. Uh, last fall, when the gymnastics program lost their practice space kind of unexpectedly, um, we did a quick conversion of the storage room area in the high school to uh, turn it into a practice facility for gymnastics. And and that that actually, there was more in there than meets the eye. That that was a, that was a lot of work. There was a lot of stuff in that room and a lot of pallet racking, and we had to take that down and get it ready for gymnastics. And we were able to do that prior to their first day of practice. Um, the middle school PA, I'm really going to let Jim talk more about that. You know, we were in conjunction with IT on that project, but but they they really, they did the lion's share of work on that PA project. Um, we did a LED lighting conversion in the Holton and EP Rock gymnasiums. Uh, turned out very nice. That that was one of the projects that actually was listed on the long term um, project plan. Uh, we added twenty three stalls of parking out at the ASC building. Um, we replaced the ninety three wing roof out at Holton. That was about a ten thousand square foot roof. Uh, that was uh, just within the last month. Uh, we finished the build out of that soft rock concession area. Um, it includes restrooms, concession, a press box upstairs. That actually turned out very nice. Uh, this is a pretty good one, too. We we implemented our Akita box system last year. It's our electronic work order system. Um, all all the the software and training and implementation is done. That system has been up and running in its in 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 over the entire district since about February. And as of date, we have about nine hundred and eighty four completed work orders logged on that system, and that includes the period when no one was here. So, I mean, typically that number will be higher because, you know, we won't be gone from March till July. Um, continued working with uh, WOLD on that long range planning. Did a lot of touring in the facilities with them and worked with the kind of front end development of the facilities portion of that long range plan anyway. Uh, we helped the IT and duty departments move from their Baraki drive a- address uh, over to the middle school where they're now currently housed. Um, and for COVID, we continue and did and continue to work with the admin team, develop plans and procure um, the materials and supplies needed for the twenty twenty one school year. That is a lot of work. Um, as I'm sure everybody on the admin team will attest to, we we've got, we've done a lot and we've got much to do. And then finally, we just continued working towards those project closeouts for the high school and middle school projects. We're getting really close. We're at, we're down to about five issues on our open list. Um, and my my hope is that within the next month or two, we've kind of got a direction on just completely closing that out.
All right. Excellent report, Jim. Thank you for your brevity, and that's uh, awesome on the project closeout. I mean, I I know that there's people that think it's ancient history about getting the referendum passed and building on those projects, but to go from well over a thousand open items after all the contractors believed we were done with the project to now just five, uh, that's pretty good. That's more than pretty good. It's great. So, good job.
Thank you.
Um, any other comments by board members? I can't see all the board members, so if anyone has a question for Jim, please speak up. Going once, going twice. All right, I guess we'll turn it over to Rivercrest, Katie?
Hi. Thanks. You have a a report with lots of bullet points, but what I'd like to do tonight is share just a little bit about um, kind of our story of this year at Rivercrest. And we began the year knowing that with a new schedule and many new students that we would need uh, to really focus on positive connections. And we wanted to fuel those with kindness, grace and flexibility, and that would be the key to success for everyone. What we didn't know at the start of the year is how deeply we would end up relying on those things through the changes and the challenges that nobody could have anticipated. Um, so in the beginning of the year, we set goals for a high level of teamwork. Classroom teachers worked together to maximize their additional common planning time to utilize data, coordinate efforts to support students and provide responsive teaching uh, to students based on their needs. New Fonda's and Penel guided reading books were a wonderful addition this past year, and teachers used those along with the Jan Richardson lesson plan templates that we had had training on last year to support student learning in reading at a higher level than we've we've been able to in the past. Each month, we learned about love and logic strategies and implemented things like um, calm classrooms across the entire building and all of our classrooms. We participated in district wide professional development that helped us all to learn more about the mental health needs of students and trauma sensitive practices, which helped to reinforce our commitment to the importance of kindness and connections. Across all of our elementary schools, our fourth graders participated for the first time in a kindness retreat facilitated by Youth Frontiers. Very special retreats that were off site for our students. They lasted an entire day. Uh, utilized parent volunteers as well as our teachers and proved to be a truly positive experience for all those involved. The students thought it was great to learn about the kindness boomerang and consider how kindnesses that they share out into the world can change the world and their school, and those kindnesses will come back to them. So Youth Frontiers did fun things with singing, dancing, storytelling, small group activities and humor to build that excitement. And fourth graders across the district um, focused on kindness. Each building had its own retreat, but the retreats were similar. Teacher leadership teams at Rivercrest promoted connections through schoolwide activities, one of which was uniting students through literature. We received a STAR grant which funded the per uh, the purchase of a common picture book to be used each month for each classroom. And we use them to spark discussions across the building about character traits, kindness and making connections. We also had a fantastic partial month of fun with a theme of superheroes to promote reading and get kids excited about reading. Um, and although it got cut short, it was a a fun time for everyone. When circumstances changed and we shifted to teaching students from a distance, many things changed for us. But what did not was our commitment to the positive connections fueled by kindness, grace and flexibility. We stayed connected as a school community through common experiences like Action Week and Spirit Week and shared at home learning experiences through our Rivercrest reporter and visit um, video messages. And we made smile to smile connections with students through Google meets and used creative approaches. The teachers were so creative with those meets. And it gave students a chance to connect in entirely new ways, introducing their classmates to their pets and their and their favorite toys and things within their home. And we're very grateful for the parents and the kids for inviting us into their homes. We practiced giving grace and being flexible and holding on to our commitment to make connections and show kindness together. And our teachers, families and students are resilient, and when things got tough, they united together tighter than ever, and were truly inspiring. Circumstances changed, but because of our incredible teachers, they were able to stay focused and stay strong. And they did not let any hurdle stop them from keeping kids connected to their school community and their learning. And we certainly could not have accomplished what we did without the support we got from the district, um, teaching and learning and IT and student services were absolutely incredible through all of this. So I'm grateful to share such a a strong highlights. I'm grateful for our amazing teachers who are at the heart of each and every highlight I shared with you, and I'm grateful to our families and their continued support and partnership.
Great. Thank you, Katie, for the report. And uh, board members with questions or comments for Katie?
Uh, Sue, Sue here. I was just going to say I'm I'm I hear in Katie's report, which is just marvelous, and I I love the kindness retreats. I heard about those from a child. Um, but I I hear in your voice, it's almost as if despite the COVID, uh, your school uh, hit a refresh button, and I'm I'm not going to be surprised uh, if I hear some of that in some of the other principals' reports tonight. But thank you very much. It was very upbeat.
Thank you.
Great. Other questions or comments? For Katie?
Love the gratitude, Katie. It's good stuff.
Thank you, and thank you, Sue, as well.
Thank you for a great report.
Yep, I think that uh, great stuff in there about teaching of values and how it impacts how we learn um, and reflects how we teach. So, great job. Any other board members? All right, Katie, thanks for your report. Next up would be North Hudson and Shannon. Uh, I'll let you take it.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? I can, yeah, I can say that this was a very memorable um, year to be a first year principal. So um, and I can echo a lot of the things that that Katie said. Um, gratefully, when I went to put my pen to my paper on writing highlights for this year, there were many more highlights than there were challenges. And even during the challenging times, um, we had a lot of silver linings that came out of school closure and some of those included um, connections with families, really deep connections with families, more so than than had been in the past. A lot of practices that had to do with technology that will continue um, throughout the school year. And just a lot of collaboration. I would say a deep level of collaboration with our teachers and um, parents and administrators. So that was one thing that I could echo um, with Katie's. I too have a lot of bubbles, but I really just wanted to highlight towards the bottom, um, a few things that that I would say that that parents and students and staff would all agree were highlights for North Hudson. Um, one was the creation of a North Star student. This was a way to recognize students that went out of their way to be respectful, responsible and safe. They were recognized by staff members. They got a little postcard that said what it is that they did that went over and above. They got their picture taken. They got to ring a fun bell and then got their picture posted in the hallway. We too had a schoolwide focus on kindness and something new that we started is um, grade levels and students ran our monthly all school meeting. So that was a really fun way to to get the kids involved in those all school meetings and have a a collaborative focus on kindness. Um, one really big thing that that we did this year that was new, we had a a steam night. It was the first time that that we'd ever done this at North Hudson. It was just another way to reach It was the first time that, that we'd ever done this at North Hudson. It was just another way to reach out to, to the community and get parents and families into our building. And we had oh, 12 to 15 stations and they were run by staff members at North Hudson and some uh National Honor Society students from the high school. And we had over 200 people in our building that night. And it turned out to be one of the um favorite experiences that the kids noted at the, you know, at the end of the year that that was one of their favorites. So that was really big for North Hudson this year. Um, we also started a, a small scale mentor program similar to what I had experienced at EP Rock. And so we started, started at small scale, identified some students that we thought could use a a mentor, a little, an extra adult in their world. Um, and we started it small, like I said, with mentors within our building. And about the time we were, we were um lined up with a uh local church to sort of expand um that program, then we went into closure. I'm really looking forward to, you know, hitting the ground running and getting that program um on the ground next year. Um, another thing that I, that I experienced this year at North Hudson that has been a tradition is the, the Hudson High School um, the Rhinestone Raiders, they, they come to perform for our special education students. And that was a really moving experience for me and everybody that was involved. So I'm working with Mrs. Dato to sort of e- expand that and have more of our students be a part of that, um, be a part of that next year. Um, just highlight our Patriot Day. That's been a tradition at North Hudson that I was able to see for the first time. Kids singing songs and they wrote poems and then honored community members in remembrance of, of Patriot Day. And then the last one I wanted to highlight was um what we called the North Star Code. I made um a, a decision to, because, because of um problems that we were seeing on the playground, I made a decision to stop sports for a little while on the playground, which wasn't exactly a popular decision, but we took a little time out and we, we implement the North Star Code, which really highlighted our, our um playground rules, but really kind of a unit on sportsmanship. And so I'm happy to say that when we, when we put sports back on the playground, our um behavior referrals were cut more than half. So it was a really good, it was worth our time to take um to take and do that with, with our students. Um, so that's really what I wanted to highlight. And then just give everybody around me a shout out, that my staff at North Hudson and my principal team that I couldn't have done this year without and administration and everybody around us. So it, it's, this is definitely a job that, that is not done alone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Shannon, for the report. And I, I really appreciated that last point about the playground behaviors, uh referrals being significantly reduced. Kudos there. I, I am curious, um, being this, you don't really have anything to compare it to. It's your first year as being principal, but um, what your assessment was, the year got cut off with about 10 to 11 weeks left. Uh, as far as the direction you were heading, um, was it um more of a challenge about what you expected? And were you anticipating um a trajectory of success had we been able to complete out the year?
Absolutely. I, I think it, it's, it's a difficult thing to follow a principal, like I would say Dolph, who was very popular. And um, so we really, we really focused and I had new staff members this year. So we really focused on culture and community and we were, we were really headed in the right direction. I had students that were um, you know, changed their trajectory a little bit. I, I, the, the, the sports and the the problems on the playground weren't anything new. Um, but it, it was worth taking that time out and I saw a really big difference. And then even just the shift in kindness and sportsmanship alone. And I had a lot of help with that. We, um, Mr. Dolph is a coach. And so I sat in on some of the teachings about um, about sportsmanship and just some really um really good lessons for adults as well as kids. So yeah, I'm very pleased with how the year went. And even like I said, enclosure, we, we had some really big wins that I as much as I, we kind of snicker a little bit about this being my first year and being a challenge. Everybody was in the same boat. This was new to everybody around me too, not, you know, not just me, but I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm honored and, and I feel like the year was a success. So.
Excellent. Other board members, uh just state your name and go ahead and shoot, shoot a question to Shannon.
Bob Bowman. Um, Shannon, just want to congratulate you on your first year. Uh, all my kids went to Hudson, our North Hudson Elementary. So I was near and dear to my heart. Great staff over there and I, I do keep in touch and I have heard from parents that the that steam night was uh very well received and, and wonderful. So congratulations on your first year.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah. No, Rob Brown here. Uh, Shannon, great, uh, great first year, given everything going on. Can't imagine stepping into uh COVID and anyway, it sounds like it went well as could be expected.
Yeah, I, I, I'm still hearing feedback from parents about how fast teachers stepped into that and, and how, how, how pleased they were with, with the delivery of, of, of education and of lessons during that time. I'm still getting positives. So I think we, we did it right. Thanks, Rob.
Any other comments?
Oh, yes. Heather Logan, another parent alum of North Hudson. And I would say as much as Dolph was beloved, um, not so much when he too at one point had to cut off recess for the boys. So if that makes you feel better. Um, there were, there were moments. So I'm glad to hear that you got it resolved. Congrats on a, on a great first year. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks to Heather.
Yes. And I'll, I'll add to the board members who have had kids attend North Hudson. Granted, it was back in the nineties, but you know, still, um, it is a, a really well-loved school in the community. But um, just be careful now that you've established all these firsts. Uh, when you set that bar that high, now you've got an even more challenge, bigger challenge to get over that bar next year. All right?
You're right. Thanks, Jamie.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for your report. All right. Next up, we have Dolph. Speaking of the man uh in his uh new school at EP Rock. So Dolph.
Well, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, last month, Mr. Benke kind of talked about this being a, a year of change, some expected, some not. You know, we had our elementary redistricting. So we had some students um moving buildings, staff moving buildings um at EP Rock specifically. Amy Hamburg retiring and she was so well-respected and such a strong leader with, with my transition there. And so, um, so those are some of the things that we expected. And obviously the last third of the year, we had the unexpected piece with COVID. But, but to start the year, I was really happy. Actually, Jamie, when you talked at the welcome back that you talked about the collective commitments that the board was making, um, because that was some of the same type of work that I was doing with the EP Rock staff. So the first portion of my board reports, and I'm not going to talk about all of them, but there's some actions that we agreed upon to, to take this year. And they're really whole child actions. Some were academic. Some were more social emotional. And so my staff really agreed to this year and the second year of implementation with Jan Richardson um to really get good at that lesson plan format. And each grade level has several of those formats that they'll use depending on um where students are, are reading instructionally. And so they committed to that. They committed to two rounds of coaching. And then also for me to come in and observe their lesson plans um in January to see where they were at. And I was just so happy um with their implementation. I got to all classrooms except one before COVID hit to observe their, their guided reading. And it's just, um, it's such a high leverage thing, K5, to have a proven curriculum like the Jan Richardson, the lesson plan formats are proven to. And it's, it's really something that's a high leverage thing to, to get students to to read at high levels. And so um I just really uh I'm proud of the work that the staff put in this year on the guided reading. On the social emotional side, there's a couple of things that um there, they said, well, we'll take actions on that. And one was just developing their expertise with the nine love and logic strategies. We got through up to eight. We didn't get the ninth one in before um school closing onsite. And then in all of our classroom spaces, and that includes um sped specialist, we also got calming corners up and running um with teaching students how to use the tools that are there to either calm their minds or their bodies. And so those are all really important collective commitments uh we made this year and, and really we came back to and took a look at how we were doing with those. The next couple of items are really some post-COVID highlights. And the first one I want to hit on is the Stand By Me mentoring program that um Shannon mentioned a little bit. So it's on its 21st year at EP Rock Elementary, 48 men, mentors. Some are on the Zoom meeting tonight, whether they're board members or district admin who give uh weekly to eat lunch with, discuss, play games with students at, at EP Rock Elementary. So I totally understand why Shannon would, would take that practice that she's seen for years there and, and get it up and running at um North Hudson Elementary. And, and when you look at how um students achieve at EP Rock, one of the things that you see is the longer that they're in that school, their achievement goes up and up. And I know this is one of the really important components of it. Um. The other reason I wanted to bring this up is because it ran, uh, it's, it has run 21 years. And so when Dr. Hamburg came in, it was one of the things that she continued to cultivate. And strong leadership when there's a transition, um, practices that are proven and, and working well for students stay in place. And I just wanted to give this as one example of that strong leadership and, and things that have continued even when there's been a transition. Uh, the other piece within uh highlights uh pre-COVID, I want to talk a little bit about, and it's a district-wide piece, but it has to do with our Studer professional development around uh staff engagement, specifically around rounding. And so um in my building specifically, I was able to get in 31 rounding sessions. Some of those were with the same staff a couple of times this past year. Um, but I just found it so powerful. It's really around four questions, um, questions that you just sit down. Short, about five-minute meeting, um, one-on-one with staff. It just, what's working well for you this past few weeks? How can I be helpful to keep you engaged in work? Um, who, who, what staff member has been really helpful recently and what did he or she do? And that process for me did a couple of things. It helped me see themes on things that were going well in the building. It gave me some feedback on some things that we might want to change that I would not have known about if I wasn't meeting one-on-one with staff. And probably the most fun part of that is I now had acknowledgements from a staff member to a staff member that I could write down and, and shoot out a, a rock star card to that staff member on something good that they had helped unknown, another staff member with. Just a great way to build a positive community within the building. And so um, just, I want to give the board a little bit of, of feedback on that just because um, it's something that you supported and I really appreciate it being fed. And I know it will continue to be fed with, with Gail coming in from Studer. My last portion of, of the report for EP Rock Elementary is really post-COVID. I have a lot of specifics there, but I'm not going to go into specifics. Um, I'm going to be more general. And so one of the things I did at the beginning of the year is I, I use a couple of video clips with Mr. Rogers. And the first purpose of that was to show those positive connections that he would make. So people around my age watched him growing up, knew there's a general connection um that I had with him and, and others did too. And who would think that the last third of the year, we would all become Mr. Rogers? Where we're teaching remotely. We're figuring out how to connect through screens. Um, and our change in professional development went from Jan Richardson being really purposeful and methodical over two years to this switch of being, having to be really nimble and fluid with our learning while working together um very quickly. And so I couldn't be prouder, as my other principal colleagues have, have talked about our teaching and support staff and how quickly they had to flip to support our students and their families. Um. But you know, teaching and learning did a lot of front-loading for us. And they did a lot of things to support that roll out to help teachers the first couple of weeks. That continued. District admin was working hard, building principals were working hard. Um, we had support staff later on within this closure that were helping with um reading and math interventions. And so I'm just proud of the work that we've done. Um, you know, there's a quote that popped up and it was Winston Churchill and it, he talked about right now, we're, we're not at the beginning of the end. It really is the end of the beginning. And so I look at the, the leadership that the board will need to do. Our teachers, support staff, district admin, building principals are going to have to continue to do here for quite a long time. And, and I just, I just know we're up for the challenge. I know we have a lot of challenges in front of us. But I couldn't be prouder of the, the work that we've had to do um these last few months and are, are still doing right now.
Um, time for comments? Jamie?
I was muted. Go ahead, Sue.
I'm sorry. I was just, I'm just going to say that was absolutely very powerful, Dolph, and uh inspirational and uh just I, it just sounds like you just had a fire under you this last year at EP Rock. How exciting. Um, and so now that makes me feel like as a board member, I've got to work even harder. So now you, you've been inspired me to be more committed. So thank you.
You're welcome, Sue.
Other board members, questions or concerns or comments about Willow River or Dolph's report? I'll just congratulate you, Dolph, on uh, you know, a successful, you know, transfer. Now you're a veteran principal in multiple uh buildings. That's going to be, that's a relatively short list, I assume. People who are bigger historians in the district might know that, but I know that you're not anywhere near the end and look forward to a lot of great years. If I make the mistake of referring to North Hudson though, you'll, you'll forgive me, right?
Yes, I made that mistake too. So.
All right. Um, and I just, yes, go ahead, Bruce. Go ahead.
Great report, bud. Real good. Uh, thanks, Dolph. And I think uh your reference to Mr. Rogers is very timely as well with the uh Beautiful Day in the Neighborhood that was all out recently. I think all of us could watch that and learn something from that as well as uh the documentary that was out on um uh last year. I mean, both just phenomenal. Um, and it's a, it's a it really is a great reference to what um we're going through right now. So uh really enjoyed your report. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Heather.
Yeah, I just, um, in general, I think one of the things I really love seeing through these reports is how each school in their own way, with their own local culture, has the way that they recognize students, the way that they encourage positivity, encourage good sportsmanship, encourage kindness. You know, it's not the same thing. It's not named the same thing in every school across the district, but that the, the leadership at each building with the teachers and working with the kids. It's something that they can own and be proud of locally as part of their local school pride. And that's just, um, it's so nice to see that included in all of these summary reports and that it's one of the things that you all choose to highlight. Cause I think that's that's so important to these kiddos as they develop that real sense of pride and ownership in their, in the community that they're a part of. So, so thanks to all of you for, for making that happen and for, for including that in your reports.
Thank you for your comments, Heather and Bruce um and Sue. And others that have questions or comments on this report?
Um, just real quick to piggyback on, on the uh Mr. Rogers, I just a personal thing, uh, I don't go to uh movies with my, my oldest daughter, who's now 23, I think. Um, but when she's a senior at U of M, uh, I met her and we went down to the Riverside Theater and we watched that documentary on Mr. Rogers and it was uh, might be the last movie I ever go to with my daughter, but um it was very, very meaningful and uh wonderful. Thanks, Dolph.
You're welcome.
All right. And that's uh, I guess we're at the halfway point on the reports. Does anybody need to take a break or anything? I'm not hearing anybody, cause I can't see anyone's hand raised. So I, I'm going to assume that you shot, you got right now, you got 30 seconds to say it. And uh, you can interrupt me because I was just going to make a personal comment. I shouldn't uh uh probably, but I'm going to go against my better judgment. Just apologize and do a confession that I did not get through all of these reports. Um, this being my seventh year, I have gotten used to a very high degree of proficiency in the principal reports. Um, but uh if it were not for the fact that I was hospitalized this weekend, I would have got through my board prep. I was um, working on the agenda up until Thursday, and that's about the time when I started going to the hospital. And so anyway, um, just the fact that I hadn't opened these documents uh prior to tonight uh shouldn't uh reflect back on any, anybody feel any less. I think we've got a lot of reasons to be proud in our district. And I was really looking forward to these elementary school reports. I know we got I know we got one left with Kim at Willow. But you know, while we see similar things, it's not cookie cutter, it's not identical. I really appreciate the effort that you principals put in these things to making each school your own. I think Heather's comments, I would agree with 100%. And building that sense of community, school pride, and that neighborhood feeling, I think really goes a long way to propelling that positivity. Because it does get hard to top each year achievement-wise. And so when we can improve it in all areas for all students, or more areas for all students, we can't do all the time for everyone, but very good, positive reports. So I'll turn it over now to Kim Willow River.
Thank you. So there's many highlights at Willow River that I wanted to touch on. I mean, it's just been an extraordinary year. Our highlights range from our monthly Love and Logic all-staff meetings to all of our work with Studer, the staff survey analysis, welcoming. We were able to welcome 4K here at Willow, 2:00 AM sessions, 2:00 PM sessions. And then just continuing all of our student success vision through our SMART goal and actions with Jan Richardson book studies, increased purposeful PLC discussions, our professional training opportunities, coaching follow-up. This year at Willow, we felt like we were really student-focused and on target, as I know that you've heard from all of the other elementary buildings as well. But one thing that I'd really like to highlight for Willow is the pilot that we went through. So all of our K-5 teachers participated in the pilot. They jumped right in wholeheartedly on Fontes and Penel Classroom, also known as FPC. So our work on the pilot began back in July and August with the teachers, where they were getting trained by Heinemann representatives. Amy Wise took the lead from teaching and learning with, so she, the instructional coach, Chloe Brine, assisted in guiding this successful pilot with all of our Willow staff. The teachers last summer redesigned their schedule to support all of the FPC components, which included the interactive read-aloud, mini lessons, shared reading, writing about reading, and a phonics word study or PWS, while still meeting the rest of their schedule with the core guarantees. So they just encompassed everything and jumped right in. We recognized, though, that for the pilot to be a success, we needed a high level of collaboration and communication. So between myself and teaching and learning, we met weekly. Through a shift in the schedule, grade levels, we're able to meet weekly to discuss FPC with either Amy, myself, or the instructional coach. We also recognized the importance of the vertical discussions. So we met monthly as a, as a staff. Amy called it our thrills and our chills. These meetings were integral, although because they allowed us to learn from one another, we troubleshoot any of the speed bumps we came across. And we really gained a vertical understanding of the resource as a whole. And then already in October, so after just a little over a month, October, and then in November, teacher feedback, we were gaining feedback throughout the year. They noted the quality of the text, the depth of the discussions that they had with their students, the plethora of books, they loved the clear layout of the plans, and really noted the increased levels of student engagement within the interactive read-aloud. We brought these discussions together. So as Amy and myself or Chloe met with teachers, we brought, brought this together to gain a vertical perspective. And then we sent out a Friday findings. Amy put everything together and sent that out to the staff as a whole. Although early, our soft data in January from our F and P, I call it soft just because it was so preliminary, you know, hadn't been that far in into the new resource. Our F and P assessments, though, our MAP data, our interim assessments, they really showed an increase in the gains of our comprehension. We're really looking forward, which is, we were actually, as a staff, looking forward to our spring data and bringing everything together. But unfortunately, that wasn't the case with with COVID. So we're looking forward to really looking at how our historic data compares to to our future data. By the end of January and the beginning of February, we brought Heinemann representatives back and had further discussions with Willow staff. We also then began to bring district ELA representatives together to ask questions of the Willow staff. When I asked, when I reached out and asked which staff members would like to represent Willow at any of the district meetings, every single one of our staff members volunteered. They were so eager to share their insight and really take a lead with the district. We also hosted multiple ELA representatives through observation. So teachers open up their classrooms to district, to district staff, to other classroom, their colleagues, to come in. And they really wanted to show them what this resource looks like. Then the ELA representatives, as we looked at their feedback, it was just overall just incredible. Some things that they noted was the great conversations that were taking place amongst staff, how engaging the texts were, how the opportunities to practice independently after seeing and hearing the text with the teacher were, were really intensified. So I just really wanted to share how proud I was of the work of the Willow teachers and what they did on this pilot. It was very, it was challenging. There were lots of unknowns. We called it messy learning, but their outlook was just constantly positive. They had such deep reflection. And they just had a high level of willingness to learn something new at the same level of doing the Love and Logic and working on the Jan Richardson. This was an additional layer, and I just, I couldn't have asked for them to look at it with a, with a better outlook. They were able to provide the in-depth reflection that assisted our district ELA committee in teaching and learning and making an informed decision on our resource. So I just really wanted to share some of the backstory of what was taking place at Willow throughout this past year with the new resource. So thanks for giving me the opportunity.
Excellent. Thank you for your report on your strategies and actions. Do we have anybody with specific questions for Willow River or Kim or comments?
I like Mr. Rogers too, but we did not.
Well, don't take the lack of comments or questions adversely necessarily. You know, when we get the reports of the different schools, we joke a little bit about certain things. But it is very difficult. It's not like we're singling out one school over the other. It's like, who's your favorite child? There's, I mean, my kids have attended, I think, Willow River and and North Hudson, but have had access to the other schools and everything. So it's great to see, though, in your report, Kim, the repeated use of the word collaborative or collaboration. And that's reflecting on, you know, our mission as a school district to, you know, make collaborative action, you know, model that for our students. So so thank you.
Well, I, this is Sue. I will make one comment. And I will say I'm repeating, repeatedly here, great enthusiasm. And and I thank you for that, Kim. But I have to say, because of COVID, I missed the, the, the art and music festival this year. I always love coming to that.
I know. It was, yeah, we, what we let out on Tuesday or Wednesday, and we were all set. Everything was decorated, ready to golf, because it was on Friday night. We still have the art, some of the art in the back room. But the Lindsay and Andy both did a virtual one, and the kids jumped right in. It was, it was a very close second. But, you know, we really miss not bringing everybody into the building.
It is fun. We'll, we'll do it again.
Yep.
Yeah, let us know when that will be. And I think we're, I missed the the 100th anniversary. We should almost make it an annual thing in celebration of our oldest building in the district. But, okay, yes.
One, one final comment. You know, Kim, I really, I appreciate you spending time talking about the the teacher's experience with the the FPC. I think as much as that quantitative data is important, and it's too bad we don't have it, I, I think, I mean, there's also great value in hearing teachers' experience seeing kids excel in a short period of time because of what they're doing. And so I, I appreciate you going into depth on that. I think, you know, again, as much as we need the quantitative data, to not forget that the qualitative data, the stories that come from the teachers of, of how they see kids light up when something that we're trying from an instructional perspective works, it's really important to hear those stories too. So so thanks for spending some time on that.
Thanks, Heather.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move along to my personal favorite, the one I know least about and have the most to learn is Instructional Technology Services. So Jen, I will give you that mantle. You get to take the floor. And you have the mantle of teaching me the most, between you and Dave Grambo, of course. But I've learned the most under your head of this department.
Well, thank you. Thank you. It is really exciting to be at the place that we are now and get to share with all of you. I started with our technology during COVID-19 because, to be honest, when I started writing, I couldn't figure out what we did before COVID-19. There was just so much that happened right up to the closure during. And then after that, it was really hard to just wrap my head around it. So and it's something that we're particularly proud of. Our team worked incredibly hard, supporting teachers, supporting families. And I'm so proud of them and all of the things that they did to really keep things moving. So one thing that was really interesting is that we surveyed all of our families right before the closure, so about two and a half weeks before we closed. We surveyed every family to find out about their device access, internet access. We had 99% of our families report to us about what the home learning environment looked like for them. We were able to quickly get devices ready, ordered whatever we needed, and get hotspots so that then we can support, or we could support our learners as they learned at a district. Fortunately, we were able to get all of that equipment before you couldn't get it anymore. Just like hand sanitizer and Clorox wipes, technology is no different. Everybody wants a webcam and a Chromebook and and hotspot. So we luckily got a lead on that and were able to provide those. We also created a help desk for our families and staff during the closure. And we responded to over 1,200 individual tickets during the time of closure. So we have a reasonably small team, if you compare us to like private industry. But they really did a great job calling families, calling teachers, getting students whenever they needed, when they needed it. We arranged for drive-through pickups to exchange devices. We were really proud of that work. And in addition to all of that, we also supported professional learning that was ongoing during the time of closure. So we typically don't do standalone technology training. We really like to keep things embedded within curriculum. But we had a lot of technology training during the closure. And I think that that'll just continue as we continue to increase what technology looks like in the schools. And one thing that we noticed is that we thought we were going to have to do all of this planning for virtual or distance learning snow days. And I really don't think that's going to be a big concern for us moving forward. So that is definitely one of our highlights. Prior to our COVID closure, actually, last summer, we held the Western Wisconsin Educational Technology Summit at the high school. We had well over 200 teachers from various districts, the partnership with some of our neighboring districts. And it was amazing. We had over 125 Hudson School District staff members attend and get professional learning. And it was a really great event. So while we had to cancel it for the summer, we're really excited to have it again next summer. And then as far as what we're finding is that technology is embedded in pretty much everything that we do across the district. So we focused on a lot of different interdepartmental collaboration projects. So supporting the Skyward True Time process, supporting Jim on the Akita Box transition with the work order system. We're currently in transition with our nutrition services software. So hopefully next summer, we'll get to update you on the completion of that project, as well as our fee management solution, we're supporting that. And then also our mass communication, so that then, long-term, we can really streamline how we can communicate with families and staff members, all the way down to some of our smallest factors, including bus reps. So really exciting projects that we've worked on. As Jim mentioned, we also just wrapped up on Friday, the middle school Bell NPA project. So I'm really excited to help make that system better. As far as our technology for students, we successfully collected 3,432 Chromebooks in June from our middle school and high school students because we had to turn them back into the leasing company so we can get our new ones. That was through a drive-through process, and we weren't really sure how many we were going to get back. And so we're really going in the right direction. We only deployed 3,570-something to students. So that's really not a bad number that we didn't get back. We're still getting more and more back every day. Additionally, we also deployed more than 400, procured and deployed more than 400 Chromebooks to our elementary, elementary buildings. Not all of them went out, but we do have those available and ready for future. And then just to wrap things up, one of our big system updates, we worked really hard and got a lot of feedback from staff and families about our Skyward registration process. If you have registered your children using the Skyward system, you know that sometimes it can be a little bit challenging, and it doesn't look right on a cell phone, but it looks great on a computer. And and things just weren't exactly what we would want for families. So we had a new staff member come on. Her name was Andrea Newman. And she really dug in and redesigned that entire system and improved the process. The feedback has been really great. So if you haven't registered your kids for next year, please do so. Probably got a reminder today. But we're really excited about that process. And then last but not least, as you know, we, cyber attacks do not go away just because we're not in school. So we continued our simulated phishing attacks for staff members. And like I said before, when we started all this in 2018, we had 30% of staff click on those simulated links. And in our most recent campaign, we only had 3.2% of our staff click on those malicious links. So we're really, like, teachers are really, and staff members are hyper-aware as to what they're getting in their email. They're calling, they're emailing us just to say, is this real? Is, you know, no, Jamie Johnson is not emailing you for an iTunes gift card. That's, that's not a real thing, even though I feel like it. It's okay. And then what we're also noticing, that's really exciting, is just on that campaign, we had 165 staff members report to us, oh, this looks malicious. They have a way of doing that through their email. So it's really exciting for us. We send them a little Swedish fish and a little thank you note of appreciation every time they report a simulated email to us. So like I said, we've had a pretty busy year. There's a lot of things that I didn't quite touch on, but you'll have the the document. But I couldn't be more proud of what we've accomplished this year and and what we're looking for and planning for for next year. So thanks.
Sue here, can you hear me? I just want to congratulate you again on being the vanguard, leading the way along with teaching and learning when the COVID hit. And the realities that we didn't know existed were starting to come at us like a giant wave. But you were up and running, and I, I think families were impressed with that sort of about-faced effort that had to be made for their kids not being in the classroom and and learning from home. So thank you very much, Jen.
Thank you.
Yeah, very, very well done. And, you know, even to think you've taken Jamie from where he's at, where he was at before to where he is today. I mean, that's equally remarkable.
I was laughing, Bruce, so.
Very, very good job, though, on getting our, our kids positioned, our teaching. Really incredible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we're excited to keep, you know, especially the connectivity for our students. Like, we're going to keep those hotspots moving forward and deploy them to our middle school and high school students pretty much right away in the fall. So then they can stay connected throughout the school year. And then as we need to deploy those out to some of our elementary families, we'll continue to do that as well.
I was wondering if you know what goes on in other school districts from other ITS department heads? And whether anyone else, we must lead the state in our school board president requesting people go pick up iTunes gift cards for them?
There's a, there's a merit badge for that. So when we have it, you know, I think that JB Johnson usually tops the list, but, you know, it's an unofficial badge.
Right. Well, that whole malicious thing, though, seriously, that's really important. And and that shows real progress when you go from nearly a third of the staff clicking on those links to now, you know, 97% recognizing and not doing it. So that's great.
I can't believe any other district out there has a Jamie Johnson-type character.
No comment, no comment. All right, Jen, thank you for your report. No comment, no comment. All right, Jen, thank you for your report, great report. Again, I'm going to move on to finance and operations, and call that one my favorite report, because I love numbers so much. But, as you can tell, this is just purely sarcastic and humorous fill-in, filler, as the next person takes the, is this going to be Mark Comlin, I assume?
This'll be myself and Mark both doing this one, Jamie.
Both, all right. Last time, I think you delegated the whole thing, Tim, but you're the boss, so you take it away.
He wants double the time.
All right.
We're trying, we're trying to maintain our record here. All right, get ready. I think, you know, like everybody else has been talking about, there's, you know, all the numerous challenges with COVID, and it kind of, kind of really rules the day with everything we do. And Mark will be talking about some of those things, and then I'll, I'll follow up with a few, few short things as we go through it. But one of the things, one of the bigger things when, when COVID first hit was, you know, fees and all the things that parents have paid for, for students, and how do we get those things back to families? How do we get them out quickly and accurately? And so, you can see as that fourth sub-bullet, the first bullet, we issued over 3,000 refunds and totaled over about $400,000. And it took a really coordinated effort. And so I just want to thank building principals, the office staff of those buildings, my financial services staff, they really, everybody really dug in. We wanted to make sure we had a lot of consistency in how those refunds were issued. It was, it was a massive undertaking. It's not something that school districts are necessarily set up to do to issue refunds, such as Target does. You know, it's kind of one other, one of their normal operating courses, but with school districts, really not at all. So, it really worked out well. And so, I'll turn it over to Mark to go through a few more items, and then I'll wrap it up.
Yeah, perfect. And just to kind of, I think I'm just going to kind of continue that, that thought on the COVID and what we experienced there in our department. As you can imagine, the financial services staff, we are very systematic in the work we do. We're working with budgets, we're working with payrolls, accounts payable accounting, you know, so when this whole thing happened, at least in our department, and things started to become inconsistent, and we'd say one thing in the morning, we'd change it in the afternoon, and then, you know, oh wait, we'd change it two days later on everybody in our department. It naturally created some challenges. So, we started trying to really focus on, you know, key concepts like, you know, flexibility, adaptability, you know, kind of these things that we needed to help our department become successful and do some of those things, like Tim just mentioned, and issuing those refunds. You know, some of those tasks were, were, you know, pretty amazing when you think of, you know, some of the work that our accounts payable department had to do as far as setting up vendors and getting people paid. You know, so a lot of that stuff was, was quite a bit of work. And just kind of proud of how they all stepped up and rose to that challenge. One of the other things that we had run into as we just started, which I think a lot of you know, or had heard about, was our new time management system. And we, not even through a year into that yet, and then now had to kind of figure out midstream, how do we continue to operate that system? How do we, you know, ensure we get timesheets through, ensure we continue to run payroll throughout the school closure, set up an additional system to help track the hours that people are working during the closure? So, it kind of became another very labor, labor-intensive process for our office staff that normally isn't there, because it was all kind of falling, falling on our shoulders. So, just again, proud of the work that they were doing in that, in that area. Some of the other things that we had started on, like some of these YASB statements and different things that we were going to change in our accounting department, kind of got delayed a little bit. So, you know, even though we did a lot of the prep work, that stuff is just going to continue now in the next year. And just overall, very fortunate to work with such strong staff and a, and a strong team in our office. You know, just proud of the effort they were, you know, able to put forth during this time, and, you know, continue to, you know, for us in the summer, it's busy with year end and, you know, getting, you know, prepared for audit and what that's going to look like as well. So, just proud of the work they're doing and the work that they continue to do. And that's all I got. Tim, I'll turn it back to you.
All right, thank you. You know, just hitting on a, a couple of other points, we, as you know, we had the health insurance work group, which comprised a number of different employees to really look at health insurance for 2021, and that group worked really well together. We got, everybody got educated on how our self-funded plan works, and we were able to come up with a number of different options that will save about approximately $270,000 going into 2021. And the important piece of that, too, is while keeping the benefits intact, and, and no premium increase for 2020. So that was really, again, a, a big thank you to that group that spent time learning about it, working through it. They were very energetic. They got some new ideas to, to push some information out on a periodic basis, so to give people a better idea of what's available through our plan, and it kind of helped, it'll certainly help with costs as well. So, one of the other things was the Safe Routes to Schools, the TAP funding. It was really, really positive to collaborate with the city staff on that. As you remember, we submitted about a half million dollars in projects, and really good projects that will, will enhance safety for students on their, on their way to school and on their way home, as well as a lot of these will also benefit the public in general. So, we're, we're hoping, we're in pins and needles, hoping we're going to get that funding. We're, we should be, we're scheduled to know more about, or know if we get the funding in August. And we made it through two of the hurdles so far, so hopefully, that gives, gives us a good chance of getting that funding. But it was, again, you know, the collaboration with the city, it's always great to be able to collaborate with your government partners on, on things. And then the swimming pool, again, that was a challenging time to really determine what the causes were of some of those swimmer discomforts. And I think we, we, we worked together with various groups to get a good solution in place that, that works, and that was very important. And then finally, as Jim mentioned, we continue to work on final closeouts of the building. It's, it's a very long process, as you might imagine. And we had, we had some high school drainage problems on the east side of the high school that had originally caused some damage. And we spent a lot of time, Jim and I spent a lot of time working, talking to contractors, talking to professional service firms, to come together and each share in the solution. And sharing in the solution was providing the expertise and the ideas, and also providing the dollars necessary to get it done, because that wasn't something the school district was, was accepting to just move forward and pay for the whole thing. So, again, that worked out very well. I think those, those folks involved. So, that, that's it.
All right, other board members with comments or questions?
Sue here. I just appreciated the narrative aspects of your reports, and thank you for going into a few details, Mark. That was greatly appreciated, because I, I think, well, speaking for myself as a board member, I don't, I don't always really know, you know, all the serious behind-the-scenes, you know, dedicated work that you all did to, to help us, you know, help us address education during COVID. So, thank you.
Other board members? I, I guess I will make a comment, and, you know, we try to make these fun, have levity, and recognize, again, what I have appreciated in hearing these reports, both last month and now through this, not to put pressure on the fact that we got two more reports yet, but it just struck me, as you were given the report, just how awesome our district is. And if I've dislocated my shoulder and patting us on our back, I, I don't care, because I think we deserve it. And you guys in finance, it's really important. I mean, there's the folks on the ground with the teaching and learning, and then there's the constant never-ending upgrades in technology that's needed. We have so many moving parts. It just goes to show, I mean, we just have an outstanding team, and really appreciate the, the work you guys do. You give us lots to be proud of. But this one is, like Sue said, one of those true behind-the-scenes things, because you interface with everybody who's given a report so far. I mean, whether it's human resources and facilities and technology, and, but this is the area that we have to gain the greatest credibility with the district, because we forget, we get into the minutia of the learning and the teaching and all that, but then realize that nearly 70% of the people in our school district don't know what goes on in any of our buildings, in any of our programs, and the only contact they have with our district is that tax bill that they get, you know, every year. And so, I know that there's some who talk about the fact that we shouldn't wear it as a badge of honor, the under levy and all that stuff. Well, the under levy's not as big as it once was, because we had to do some things with our buildings. We still have more to do with our buildings. But you guys just do an outstanding job in building that credibility, making it easier for us and the board. And, you know, that's one of the things this district has turned around, is the community relations we have. And again, there's others who get kudos for that, because it's communication, keeping the community informed and everything. But we, I, I will put us up against any district in the state for bang for the buck, as far as performance of our student, our staff, and, you know, then, and what we can report to taxpayers. I think everyone in the Hudson School District should be proud of what we're producing. And every report we've got tonight just confirms that. So, thank you. If anyone else has anything else for finance, otherwise, we'll move on to nutrition. Another one of my personal favorites, because I like nutrition any time of the day. So, with that, we'll turn it over to Judy.
Thanks for having me. I'm not sure if the volume's good or not.
It's great.
Okay, thank you. I am starting at the end of the year, and I'm starting with what we broke down for COVID feeding, meeting our student needs by providing the grab-and-go individual meals. They ended up becoming take-and-heat meals. So, our first thought was, we were going to do just cold meals, and we're going to just have one team. And we quickly realized that if anything would happen with that one team, because we had everybody in the high school location where our, our main office is, we would then be kind of shut down. So we had to break our team into two teams. We had to have our district nutrition office team, and we are blessed to have an extra kitchen here at the high school. So we moved everybody into the elements kitchen, and they actually packed out the individual meals in the elements kitchen. So if anything would happen, we could keep the operation running and have two separate teams going. So we ended up having three employees working on the office team, I called it, doing bulk family meals. And then the rest of the team was making the individual meals that went home for the people that came up for drive-up service, so to say. So they would get individual meals for their families. And in the beginning, they came every day, and then we came, we condensed it to them coming just twice a week, and that seemed to work out better. And how we knew that this was working better was, we would ask the families, okay, is it too much for you to come every day? And we would interact with them as they would come up to our tables. And what was really neat was, we did a survey, and when they would sign up, they would ask us different things, like some people needed deliveries. If you want to move forward on the slide, we ended up having two volunteers start delivering for us. And some people said, oh, you need to, we don't want like these individual meals that you see here, where it says the 450 individual meals were packed out. They wanted to have the meals packed in bigger containers, and they just wanted to come once a week. So if they had a family of nine, they just wanted, you know, maybe 15 pounds of vegetables in a big bag. So that's what we were doing in the kitchen. So we became, the office team became bulk packing out for different people. And so, as we were doing this, we just became a bigger operation, and it just became more centralized and more customized to what the parents wanted, and it was really neat to have the feedback from the community. This is an example of what the office team was doing once a week. This is the, I think it was the Asian chicken. This probably was teriyaki chicken, and we were also heating different foods up for them, like we made the oatmeal cookies for them. And these are the containers, we had to think of, what can we use? So we found some containers that we actually had in storage here on the right, and then we had to buy some containers on the left, that people could actually heat the meals in, either in the oven or in the microwave. So a lot had to go into, how do you ship at home? What do you make it in? Lots of things that people wouldn't really think about. And you can see, we would be packing it out, and the three of us would pack it out once a week, and then it would go over to the other kitchen by pushing it into the hallway, and we would have no contact with the other team, so that we could continue to stay as safe and separate from the team as possible. So, the fam, the family bulk meals served, and the meals served for this whole COVID feeling of feeding, I should say, were about 57,568 meals was what our total meals were for our COVID feeling, feeding, which is a lot of people's needs were met. I think the most rewarding part for me was to see the little kids in the car as they would smile through the windows and wave at us. I gave our bulk family students Beanie Babies for one of the giveaways, just for something that I happened to have a bunch of, and they were just so cute, and it was just neat to see the kids, and to hear the positive comments. And then they also would write comments in the surveys when they would sign up. So, for me, it was very rewarding, and we knew we were meeting their needs, and to see the, the comments come back to us. And then that was the end of the year, and we're going to be starting up again on the 23rd with us. We also began our year with elementary breakfast. These are some ideas of, or some of the items we did. We did breakfast items like the fruit breads, zucchini bread, believe it or not. We did banana breads. We did, an omelet is in the middle of the page there, and it's called a egg flip, and it's also muffins. The muffins are whole grain, of course. And breakfast participation, we exceeded our goal of 10% eating at each site, and the actual numbers you can see. And we served 56,000 meals for breakfast for our elementaries. This was our first year of breakfast. And some of the items, it's funny that they actually, they actually call breakfast pizza, a pizza. It's not pizza. It's actually eggs on a whole grain crust, but if you don't call it what it is, labeled for marketing purposes, the kids don't want to eat it. It's interesting. All our juice is vegetable blend, wangle mango, dragon fruit, and cherry star, and it's actually made with sweet potatoes or carrots. And we do that because it's another way to get vegetables into the students, and the kids actually like it. They do not like the Sunset Zip, don't ask me why. So that's just another thing that we have been working on with our kids. We do taste testing with them, and we found some dried apples that they just love. And on to our next slide. This is a picture of taste testing. This is one of my events at the high school that I did. Those are brokers that are behind the table. We can get the brokers to come in for free, and they will assist us, and they will bring the food in for free. And I have them come in, and they will help us with the kids, and then the kids will vote in the buckets that you see, they're white buckets, and they'll drop their tickets in, and they will vote. And I will do this at all the schools. Some of the items, these are actual photos of the food or marketing materials of the food, but that's what the food looks like. So we added the Tyson Chicken Drumsticks, the Twisted Cheese, which is another way to serve a cheese product instead of a crustless grilled cheese, and that's the pizza that I was talking about in the middle on the bottom. It isn't pizza, but that's what the kids think it is. And the tacos, sticks are actually taco meat with cheese in the middle of it, and it's rolled around a flour tortilla. So it's almost like a flour, it's almost like a soft taco. And it's rolled around a flour tortilla. So it's almost like a flour, um, it's almost like a soft taco. And the next slide is, I had tried to show you this at the last board meeting, but I didn't have a close up shot of it. This is how we hung the nutrition education materials. Um, it's actually a shower curtain that one of the leads came up with. And she hung it in the salad bar. And what she did was she hung all of the nutrition signs that tell the students about what the serving sizes are on it so that the students can then see what to take so that they know. And all our students, when we did our student groups with the students then knew what each portion was. And they understood they could have more than that, but they needed at least that much to be a half a cup. So it was helping them with service side, serving sizes. And the nutrition team growth through training. Our team has yearly training a couple of times a year. And we did our own, um, survey and it was anonymous. So they could write whatever they wanted to on it and felt free to write whatever. And, uh, there was no way to track who wrote whatever. And the goal was so that they felt free to share, are we meeting your needs through training? And they came back and they shared that they wanted more training on food safety. And they really liked the training that we did at the beginning of the year. So we're going to continue with training. And there's some more training pictures on the next slide. And we're going to continue with the training. They did a lot of knife skills. They need more. And we had some chefs come in and we did customer service training. And we did, uh, cooking tips, training, food safety training. And I think there's another slide. Um, basically we're here to make sure that we're working on improving the quality. We want to do more cooking training with them and more scratch cooking. And I want to thank you for allowing me the time to share some of our accomplishments that we've been able to do so far this year. It's been an interesting year and we've had some challenges this year that we were excited to meet. And, uh, we really were happy that we were able to provide some meals for the students in a different way.
Judy, uh, thank you for the report. Great report. I have to say it's the only report so far in which I've both salivated and shed a tear during the report. But, uh, uh, very proud of our district and what you did in the delivery of the meals. And your story about the young children in the, in, in the car really got to me. So I was glad I was on mute at that point. My voice would have been a little shaky. Other board members have comments to make?
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
So Judy, just a couple of quick things. Um, great foresight to divide your team into two teams, just from a redundancy standpoint, if something would have happened. Um, that was great planning in advance. So, uh, congratulations on that. Really great to see the, uh, voices student taken into consideration with all the food trials and other stuff that's, uh, happening. Very good there. And then how creative with the serving size. I think that's just brilliant. So all in all, great, uh, great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other board members? Okay, I'm not hearing any, but again, excellent report. Judy, thank you for all your good work and, uh,
Jamie, I just got one thing to ask. Um, with going to more bulk foods, going out to, I mean, I'm assuming we're going through a lot, uh, less styrofoam or packaging as that increases. Is that true?
Judy, did you hear his question?
With, as we, uh, packed out the summer, we had to use a lot of containers this summer to pack out. But during the school year, we did not use a lot of containers. I think that was your question.
So did it kind of even out, I guess is what Bob's asking or?
Yeah, my question is, I just, I see so much, you know, whether it's takeout from local restaurants or whatever, just the amount of packaging for individual meals that go out to, uh, you know, the people you're talking. If you're, if you're giving them bulk foods, I'm assuming we're losing, using a lot less of those recyclable and, and waste products, correct?
Right. When we did the bulk families, and that's what I think the bulk families really, really liked was we could put everything in a bigger container and like we used the big metal container uh, for the bigger families and especially our families, you know, we had families of five and nine, a lot of the bigger families. So we used one big bulk container to put things into instead of having to do anything individual. That's what they really liked. So for us, that was the saving grace for them. But the other ones, we had to do the individuals.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Judy, for your report. Next, and last but not least is, uh, transportation. And Steve, you want to, uh, take us through the highlights? And I figured that after the third week of March, you just pretty much put your feet up, right?
Absolutely. You are absolutely correct, Jamie. I kind of thought the word transportation might bring a tear to everybody's eye, actually. Um, so we made it. Um, I will say, I want to jump all the way down to my bottom bullet on the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. Complaints are down, especially in, uh, April, May and June this year.
Right. Enough said.
Yeah. No, the year went great. Um, I'm going to start out with the highlights and then I'll get to what we're talking about, what it might be looking like coming into the year and what we're doing to prepare for our current reality. So with very few mistakes and zero missed routes, which is a huge thing to hang your hat on. Uh, my kids don't attend the Hudson School District. They're actually in Stillwater and missed routes can be a common thing over here. So the biggest thing, we did two hundred and fifty six runs on a weekly basis in Hudson and we never missed one. Um, we did a, you can see the breakdown of routes, but I want to kind of focus on the sub bullets. We met a requirement of less than two hours on a bus each day for all students, including the private schools, who we actually pick up first, head to Willow and then head home. Um, we had no pickup time earlier than six twenty three. We drop off at the high school at seven oh eight is when our window starts. So to be able to do what we do with the amount of routes we run is pretty amazing. We had no drop off for elementary later than four fifty one, depending on the weather. Um, typically on average, we're dropped off by four fifty one and buses are back to the garage by five oh five. The biggest things, and thanks to your guys' support of implementing this, when I started, I remembered, uh, just the idea of working in the transportation department, which I had no experience in, um, was a lot to handle, but then the implementation of Tyler Drive, tablets, scan cards, um, was a lot to wrap my head around too, but the support that's been offered at the school district has really supported me on that and made it work. We rolled out the school bus ID cards across the whole entire district. Um, being a teacher myself, I know that doesn't, you know, you can do that and just hand it to the schools and let it run. Or you can do it well and you can put some training in place and build some little things is what we did. We actually had a YMCA transition student, one of our adult transition students helped me out with this. We created a training video. He ended up working at Safeway. They do on the job placement during the day. And I pitched it to his parents. Hey, you know, he's obsessed with buses and he's really interested and he's a big technology guy. Um, what would you think if he assisted me on making this video that all the elementary students will watch on how these scan cards work? And they were totally supportive of it and it went great. And that's exactly what we did. We sent the video out, we sent the cards out, um, at the building level. None of this is possible without building secretaries. Um, you give them something and they get it done. And that's, that's something, there's something to say there. Um, so they were a huge help on the distribution of cards and kind of keeping up with who needs new cards. Um, that's a learning process. So that was great. Um, what the cards did for us this year? It gave us an up to the minute record of when and where students sign on and off the bus. One example I can think of, as much as you don't want to know how that helps you, because typically that means that someone's missing or a parent has a concern about where their kid is. Um, we got a phone call about a middle school student. Her parents called pretty upset. Dad's wondering where she is. I was able to look up where she scanned on or off the bus. Realized she hadn't scanned on at the school where she should have. Um, contacted Safeway because, you know, the technology's one check, but you always got to follow through with the personal piece. Um, they radioed the driver. He, he affirmed that, yeah, no, she, I know who that is. And she didn't board the bus today. Came to find she just didn't tell her parents that she was walking home with a friend. So ended up good. But that scan piece came in handy. We got our money's worth right there on that phone call, if you ask me. Um, also, this is an instant alert to the driver when somebody boards or on boards at a stop that isn't theirs. So at the elementary level where this is big, we do have a transient population in certain areas in Hudson and kids are moving a lot and they get new buses and they're five years old and it's a lot to handle for them. When they scan on that bus, if they're not on the correct bus, it gives the, the driver an alert. Kind of an, uh, I don't know, it's a buzz that you know is not a good buzz. But it also shows that driver which bus that student should be on. So that's a piece we never had. We relied on, uh, parents letting their kids know, students having the tags on their, uh, bags. And this has really, you know, eliminated a lot of room for error with as far as which, uh, where kids get on and off the buses, their correct stock. On the other hand, at middle school, that buzz can cause some, uh, tension between the driver and a kid when they get on or off. But those are things that we just deal with on a daily basis. Um, it also gives us a record of our ridership numbers, which has helped us, um, make those phone calls when kids aren't riding in twenty days. Try to keep our routes efficient, allow me to adjust them when we can. Um, but I've never removed a student without a phone call. So. Uh, we also, a big piece of the scan card is we successfully wrote out the traverser ride three sixty, which is the parent portal piece of this whole Tyler technology implementation. Parents have always had to rely on, um, at one point, I think Skyward informed them of their bus details. Um, and then it was just the mailer that we sent out. Well, now you have an app on your phone as long as you're a registered user, which I think we had. We currently have twelve hundred and twenty three registered users. Now that's families. So obviously they have multiple kids. So I would say the majority of our families are signed up with Ride three sixty. Um, when I make a change on their students bussing, that change is updated out and within fifteen seconds on that app. That app also gives, so it gives their bus stop locations and times, their ridership schedules, such as days of the week, if they're riding moms and dads, which is big for drivers to see also, an estimated time of arrival. Um, and then real time visual of a bus and route. So if I get a call from Safeway, hey, Steve, this bus is supposed to be, they're lost. I can just pull up all the buses on the screen, um, see where they're at and try to navigate them back to the correct route. So I'd already touched on that complaints are down. I kind of, when I came into this job, I made the mistake of diving into the previous emails, which I should have just avoided all that altogether. Um, but I can honestly say, um, the complaints I'm getting are, you know, it's, it's that, uh, ten percent, which I know at school, you know, you're, you're shooting for that eighty percent and then the twenty you're working with. We, I feel like I got it that we got it down to ten percent. Um, when I do get a complaint, it's usually followed up with, I know you guys are doing your best to make this work. Um, but we just want a little more for our kid, which I get. I have three kids of my own. Okay. So the big thing, um, that's all great. There's definitely room to improve in the transportation department as I learn more. Um, you know, I'm making those adjustments, learning more about the software we use and what it can do for us. Um, the support that I've received there on the Tyler technology end has been awesome. I mean, I've requested to be able to load, because we do transfer buses, I'd love to be able to say only unload high school students here, only unload middle. And within a month, they've made that happen for us. So that's been great. Looking forward, um, so a lot of collaboration with Safeway this summer. Um, last summer it was more on basically my job of the routing and things we've done in the past that have worked and didn't work. I feel like I've kind of got a handle on that to the point where I feel confident in my ability to be ready and by August third for drivers to drive their routes. Uh, but now we have this new current reality. So we are implementing signs on buses addressing symptoms and ridership eligibility, which mimic and reflect that of which would be seen on the school door as you show up for school. It's no different than that there. We have all of our drivers, uh, wearing masks. We've adjusted bell times, which thank you to the school admin for making that happen because that's a big deal. It'll allow us that extra three to five minutes to clean the buses in between each and every run. Um, we're looking into options for assigned seating. I know Dr. Olet touched on, uh, that a little bit, possibly families sitting with families, which makes sense. Uh, stops, you know, your stop sits, you load from the back, things like that. That'll be, that's kind of my next hurdle. Once we get everybody on the bus and we can send this out, um, possibly a couple of routes in over, in order to lower the, uh, high load count routes. Um, my first remedy for that is to look at low road count, low load count routes. Is there a way they can swing through typically our high load counts are like the EP Rock neighborhood and Willow neighborhood for middle school? And then, um, kind of Red Senior Canyon Coach like for middle school also. Middle school is the big ridership. Um, so looking at, can we accommodate with another bus there? Obviously shooting for efficiency, knowing the angle of safety, maybe we need to add another route. That's things we're talking about. Um, Safeway has implemented their own driver checking process because we can do everything we can do on our end, but we need to ensure that our, uh, contractors are also supportive of this, which they have totally been on board. Um, they went ahead and made four masks for each of their drivers to take home. Drivers will punch in at the door, they'll direct report, uh, they'll report directly to their bus, no gathering in the lounge. Um, they've installed sanitizers at each door. They're doing temp checks and they have a COVID nineteen symptoms, uh, questionnaire that they ask their drivers each day. Um, and then finally, you know, we have those meetings, um, like Dr. Olet said, where we talk about guiding principles for each of these little categories that need to be addressed. Transportation obviously is included in that. Our first meeting, we're talking about, you know, the big question, should kids wear masks? Um, and we all said, you know, just like we've been saying all night, it's a fluid situation. Why not highly encourage it? And we can only, we can't really predict what's going to happen, but as we move forward, we'll, we'll look back at it.
And I certainly, I want to speak up real quick and just recognize, uh, Steve and all of his awesome work this past year. Um, wonderful progress, um, in a short period of time. And, uh, we are, um, I don't know if all the board members are aware, but we are running buses right now with E S Y. And so that's one reason why some of these pieces had to be put into place at this time. We'll continue to reflect on, um, the practices going into the beginning of the school year. But because we're actively running buses, some of this had to get, um, up and running earlier than the other decisions.
All right. Uh, thank you, Andrea, for adding that and I join in the, the kudos for the improvements and the reduction in complaints and missed routes, uh, are way down. There was no missed route. So perfection. Here we are saying we don't strive for protect, or we don't expect perfection, but we achieve it, I guess. So, um, questions or comments from board members?
Uh, Sue here. I'll just say, Steve, I, I'm sorry you had to be at the end of the list. And, um, now you can go have, uh, an adult beverage. But, uh, anyway, thank you for your dedication, uh, to all of this. And, you know, I thought the worst job for you was going to have to repack all this in a way to make it work and the accountability and where are the kids and so on. And, and you did that fantastically and then you get hit with the, the, the whole new world of COVID. So, um, thank you for just, um, staying in there and fighting through all these, these new things that come your way.
No, absolutely. Thank you. And to piggyback off what Jamie said, like I said, I'm in Stillwater. I'm not sure if, um, anybody's picked a paper up in the last couple of months. But to have a school board like this in Hudson that, um, functions the way it does and continues to move towards the common goal is great where if you've seen what's going on over here, it's a little different. So I think your community greatly appreciates what you guys are doing.
Other comments or questions? Steve, I was just wondering on that last point, understanding that our plan for coming back in the fall is a work in progress and the fact that you're now testing routes and using, uh, bus transportation this summer. Um, understanding that right now where you're at for the recommendation is a strong encouragement. And I'm just going to say that personally, uh, what happened to me in the last week has given me different perspective on this issue. And, um, so I'm more easily able to put myself as a parent of a child who were, that lives in a household where somebody is COVID vulnerable. And why would we not be conditioning? You want to ride public transportation, you wear a mask. Bottom line, sorry that you don't like. Bottom line, sorry that you don't like it, but it's for up to an hour. And I wouldn't appreciate very much having my kid sitting, whether it's one seat apart or whatever, from somebody who is shouting and singing on the, on the bus and is not wearing a mask. That, that would bother me as a parent, and I think we're opening ourselves up to a lot of criticism. And we already have reduced number of people that want to do it and that's great. I respect the families that want to drive their own kids to school. But why would we not say, for that hour, hour fifteen, possible that you could be on the bus? Some kids are on the bus a lot less than that. That you're just going to have to wear a mask. And if you don't, I'm sorry, find another way of getting your kid to school.
Well, and I think that's certainly, I mean, we, we're, we have the decision-making processes and that's a lot of conversation that we've been having. And I think, I think what we know now is that two weeks from now, it'll be very different than even the landscape we face right now. So I think it seems to be, I think most students at this time are wearing the mask on the bus, but certainly want to let the process continue with the COVID decision-making meetings so that we can fully vet all the different options because it does get complicated, but I, I certainly hear your points, Mr. President, and I think that those will definitely be a part of the conversation as we're moving forward.
No, and that's why I appreciate the fact that, you know, you got to try something. So I appreciate the fact that let's try it and see where we make it a strong encouragement, which is another word for saying you can wear it if you want to, then, and seeing what kind of compliance you get. Who knows? Maybe you will get common sense. Sometimes we get more common sense from kids under the age of 18 than we get from parents over the age of 30. So we'll see. Is there any other questions or comments just about the overall transportation report? Again, just more good news and great job, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. I'm not hearing any, so I guess we're able to move on to our action. We have four portions. The first is always the consent items. And hopefully someone who does great proofreading, and I'm not going to name names of board members, but I know there are a couple who do a much better job than I do. But if there was any mistakes caught, hopefully Tim Miner was contacted. The changes have been made, but I would entertain a motion to approve the consent with the language in the motion that's on the screen.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
I move approval of the consent items and that the chief financial and operations officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $4,382,107.11.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Right, there's been a motion, a second. All those in favor of approving the consent items and the spending in the amount indicated by member Brown indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those hopefully are unmuted and those that against, same sign. Hearing none, the consent items are approved. Now I got to look at my agenda and I guess it's academic standards. It's our annual time of year. I think this is a Dave Grambo item, but Nick, if you've got somebody else, Nick's or Dave's nodding his head. And so I, that is the one report I was able to read because it's always the first one I go to every July. So Dave?
It is a fun one. I'm glad that you recognized that. So the academic standards, this notification is statutorily required. It's required both that we post them publicly, the academic standards that is, and that we have this as an agenda item at the first official board meeting of the school year. So I, you can read the report, obviously, the, the details are in there, but I want to talk just a little bit about what the standards are and what they are not. And I get into that a little bit in the text, but I wanted to elaborate. So the standards are incredibly important. They allow us to align our work in teaching and learning. And the way that alignment plays out, it plays out both in the curriculum development process, the instructional strategy process, and the assessment process. And when we adopt the standards, we adopt them wholesale. We take all of the standards, adopt them. But the work doesn't end there. That's the very first part of the process. It's through the prioritization of the standards that happens with all of our curricular teams that we really make sense of the standards. Because when we prioritize them, we don't just say that one's important and that one's important. We do something called unpacking them, which really allows us to dig into the standard, find out what it's actually asking for students to know and be able to do. And then we develop the assessments around those standards. So although this seems like maybe a perfunctory sort of process in that the recommendation we almost always bring forward is to adopt the Wisconsin standards, there's a reason for that. One of the primary reasons, it gets back to the idea of assessment. By adopting the standards that are used throughout the state, it allows us to compare across districts, but more importantly, it allows us to make sure that our work is aligned to the ultimate measures that will be judged against. So whether that be through the forward exam or the Wisconsin, the various other Wisconsin assessments that allow us to make sure we're making progress consistently. The standards are continually revised. I listed the revisions that are coming up. You'll see in the January 21, 2021, we have the early learning standards and then four areas that will be up in the July version of the new standards that are intended to be rolled out. So that's the first thing I wanted to mention. Along with that, it's really important to understand that the standards aren't curriculum. Again, they're the starting point. Curriculum is developed with teachers. It's developed collaboratively. The standards just start that process and allow us essentially a guidepost or a target that we can continually aim toward. And I talked a little bit about aligning to the state standards. It's also very important for us to align our own standards that we adopt and our own assessments to those standards. So when we work through the process with curriculum teams, we're always continually going back to those standards and making sure that the assessments that we're creating are aligned to those standards and then ultimately aligned to those larger summative standards. With that, I have a recommendation that we would maintain the Wisconsin academic standards as the academic standards used in the Hudson School District for the 2020, 21 school year. I also placed a link there in the memo that will allow you to look at the current posting that is on the webpage. If the, the recommendation holds and this is what you ultimately decide, there would really be no need to update that other than the date. And with that, I'll open up questions.
Any questions for Dave?
Yes, I have one. David, do I recall you saying that we had, I don't know, an advisory group or somebody that's at the health education curriculum? Or will be. I know we have COVID interruption, but is that something that's going to be a focus, especially in light of the data that we have before us from the Yarbus reports?
Yeah, so a couple of things and good question. Thank you, Sue. A couple of things to that. One, we have our Teaching and Learning Advisory Council and that group will be reviewing all of our curricular recommendations. So we'll be bringing that to that team as well. We're also engaging our educators with a lot of work around the health standards as well. Having said all that, there is actually a need on, not necessarily on an annual basis, but on a regular basis to pull together a team that specifically focuses on health curriculum and that we're looking at implementing this year. We don't have the specific plan in place, but that's something that we're looking to do because the timing would be perfect when the new standards come out. We want to wait until we're sure that the timeline is accurate because that work wouldn't be as meaningful if we didn't put the standards in the hands of the folks on that team. Sometimes this timeline from DPI gets adjusted a little bit. We want to make sure that we're solid with that.
So just to confirm, you're looking for a motion that would have to do with standards, not curriculum? And the health education standards are the same ones that have been in place since 2011. They're not set to be changed till July 2021. Is that correct?
Right. Yeah, that, that is, that is correct. So the, the motion that we're looking for is related to the standards, but I do share where we are with the updates because essentially if we adopt those standards and the standards that are adopted at the state level, we've proactively adopted those 2021 standards.
Very good. Yes, Heather?
Had a motion yet? Because if not, I will make one.
Okay.
I don't think we have. So I would, I, I move to accept administration's recommendation that we maintain Wisconsin academic standards as the academic standards used in the Hudson School District for the 2020, 2021 year.
Second by Sue.
There's been a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it and we've adopted the standards. Thank you, Dave, for your report, your work on that. Very much appreciated that you keep us updated, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next up?
I'll go ahead and take the handbooks, Jamie. Since I hear the handbooks have been the same handbooks that you guys reviewed at the work session, the administration's recommendation is that you approve of the handbook says attached.
All right. Is there a motion?
Jamie?
Yes, Carrie.
Move that we approve the handbooks as presented.
Very good. And is there a second?
Second by Sue.
Second by Sue. Thank you, Sue. And we've discussed this at the last work session. Any further discussion anyone has before we vote on this motion? I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand, so all those in favor of approving the handbooks as presented now indicate aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign, aye. Hearing none, the motion passes. Now on to our final agenda item, which is approval of policies 412.1, 420, 421, 421.1, 421.2, and 423 as long as, as well as rule 420 on placement credit. This is the first reading of those student policies. Again, these were presented by Andrea at our work session. Andrea, do you have anything to add, any updates on those?
The only update that I did is something that we're trying to do systematically is to change the pronouns to be more reflective of the he, she, they, them. So then we went through that with each of these policies. And so we're just going to make that a practice going forward.
Thank you very much for that. Other than that, anyone have a question about any of these policies that relate to school admissions, entrance age, early entrance to kindergarten, admission to first grade, open enrollment, and definition of full-time student? I don't see any. All those, all those in favor, then we did have a motion and a second. Is that correct?
No, but I'll make the motion.
All right. Thank you, Rob. Rob's made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. I'll, I'll just rack that one up to having been up for 15 hours, worked a full day. And all right, all those in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. There a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Bruce. Is there a second? Carrie, did I hear a second? Oh, Bob's got his hand up. I'll give the second to Bob. All right. Motion by Bruce, second by Bob. All those in favor of adjourning say aye.
Aye.
We got four there, so I won't ask for the no's. We are adjourned and thank you, public, for viewing the meeting.
Thank you very much, Nick and cabinet members for all your preparatory work. Thank you.
Thank you all.